Good evening, everybody. I will call to order the Arvada City Council meeting for today's date, Monday, August 19th. First, I will call upon Councilmember Davis for the pledge in a moment of silence.
Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you, and now the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you very much. Mr. Louis, if you would do the roll call.
Mayor Simpson.
Here.
Mayor Proton Monet.
Here.
Councilmember Ambrose.
Here.
Councilmember Davis.
Here.
Councilmember Frey.
Here.
Councilmember Pfeiffer.
Here.
And Councilmember Marriott.
Here.
All right, thank you very much. Next, we have the approval of the meeting minutes for August 5th, 2024. Any corrections or additions? Seeing none, those stand as approved. All right, and next, Councilmember Davis with a proclamation for National Payroll Week. I believe this will be accepted by Christine Flipsey.
Yes, well, thank you. I'm excited to present this proclamation. Whereas payroll org, and it's more than 20,000 members, have launched a nationwide public awareness campaign that pays tribute to the nearly 150 million people who work in the United States and the payroll professionals who support the American system by paying wages, reporting worker earnings, and withholding federal employment taxes. And whereas payroll professionals in Arvada, Colorado, play a key role in maintaining the economic health of Arvada, carrying out such diverse tasks as paying into the unemployment insurance system, providing information for child support enforcement, and carrying out tax withholding, reporting, depositing. And whereas payroll departments collectively spend more than $2.4 trillion annually complying with myriad federal and state wage and tax laws, and payroll professionals play an increasingly important role ensuring the economic security of American families by helping to identify non-custodial parents and making sure they comply with their child support mandates. And whereas payroll professionals have become increasingly proactive in educating both the business community and the public at large about the payroll tax withholding systems, and whereas payroll professionals meet regularly with federal and state tax officials to discuss both improving compliance with government procedures and how compliance can be achieved at less cost to both government and business. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and members of the city council proclaim the first week of September as Payroll Week in Arvada and encourage everyone to give support to the efforts of the people who work in the payroll profession.
Thank you for all your hard work for this city. We appreciate you and the entire Finance Department team. Speaking of the Finance Department, Mr. Archer, I believe we have our mid-year financial update.
Thank you, Mayor Simpson, and Council, for the opportunity to talk about our finances. We will make this brief tonight. I do have a few team members with me as well, so when I can't answer your questions, I'm going to call a friend. So I do kind of feel like a broken record at times, and in some cases, that's really a good thing, and in some cases, it's not. As has been the case for the past few years, revenues are slowing, but still ahead of budget, which is a very good thing. Operating expenditures are in line with budget, but we're starting to feel pressure in many areas, and we'll talk a little bit more about that here in a bit. As you well know, our CIP is doing everything they can to get projects complete. We've seen incredible inflationary pressures over the past few years. The good news is they're slowing down. The bad news is they're still ahead of the ability we have to generate revenue. And so what do I mean by that? Well, our inflationary pressures now seem to be in the 3% to 7% category, and again, our revenue growth is in the 3% to 5% category. And so when you're on the upper ends of that, you're not able to keep up. When you're on the lower ends, we're able to keep up. And then the economy continues to be challenging. If you look at all, watch the news or anything, you'll hear about consumer debt is the highest it's ever been, mortgages are the highest they've ever been, student loan debt's the highest it's ever been, and on and on and on. However, inflation continues, excuse me, unemployment is about 4%, where people want it to be. Growth is slow, increasing the concerns about a recession, but we're still looking at a soft landing from a federal perspective. And so lots of what about this and what about that? I think we're stuck. Fair question. CIP is our capital. I apologize for that. The next thing you're looking at is our performance focus measure that we bring to you each time. This is the council required fund balance goal. That is 17% of operating expenditures. You will see, as of the second quarter of 2024, we sit at about 59%. Again, that 17% is an in-time number. It is required not only currently, but at the end of our 10-year model. And as you will see when we present the budget starting next month, we do have that 17% covered in each and every year of our 10-year model, but we get very close in the last year. Jumping into our general fund, using our red, yellow, and green, you will see that, for the most part, our revenues are positive. Overall, we're doing well in the general fund. Our biggest growth is property tax, which we are currently seeing about a 23% growth over the prior year. Our biggest loss is around our auto use, which is down 3.3% compared to the prior year. Positives in, again, property tax, general use, building revenues and interest revenue. Negatives on courts and auto. And then sales tax, we have a monitor light, and we'll talk about that here in just a minute. On the personnel side, we're still reflecting a positive light, even though we've had over 7% growth since last year. With a significant number of unfilled positions, we're still under, and we're projecting to be under for the end of the year. That is why we have a positive on that. That's not great for us delivering services to you all and to the community, but it's certainly a positive from a budget perspective. On the other expenditures, I put a monitor light on that. And again, we talked a little bit about that on our capital side. We're seeing same things on operating. 5% to 15% pressure in inflationary for just day-to-day items. Items like gas, items like water, fertilizer, et cetera, are growing faster than we can raise revenues to cover. Diving deeper into sales tax, you will see, as we said earlier, we're keeping the monitor light on that. Pretty much green. There are a couple areas that are a little bit of concern. Full-service restaurants show year-over-year negative. We'll talk about that here on the next slide. Hardware stores show year-over-year negative. Two areas that are really people investing in themselves, and so we like to keep an eye on that. We talked about this before. Our liquor stores have been down, starting two years ago. Our joke before, for you that were on council, liquor stores are always up. We always like to drink. However, the reason behind that is liquor, if you remember, has been able to be purchased inside of grocery stores, and so that has had a significant challenge. And so we need a full year of this activity to be comparing. So while this is negative, we're not worried. Our same-store liquor stores are doing just fine. This is in the aggregate. Diving deeper into the numbers, you will notice supermarkets and merchant wholesalers continue to be our leading revenue generators. However, you will also notice that e-shopping is catching up very quickly. If you remember, four years ago, that number was small. It is now over $4 million year-to-date, almost the second-largest category that we have.
Mr. Archer, just a quick question. Do we collect the same amount of sales tax revenues off of e-commerce as we do a brick-and-mortar store?
In meaning the same percentage that we charge?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
So same 3.46.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. You will notice that electric power is down 13% as it sits right now. Usually, that nominalizes itself as we move forward. So I'm hearing rumors that it's going to snow earlier this year. If that does end up happening, we will see that line item come back. Next, this is a graphical representation of what you just saw on the previous slide. And again, just want to point out, as you see, e-shopping is catching up in that last year, the brown category, and almost even with our merchant wholesalers. People got addicted to having things delivered in their house, and they haven't stopped. And I don't think that's going to stop. A quick look at auto use, down 3.3%. We were expecting a decrease in 2024, and so while we have a monitor light on this, it is trending to where we are expecting it to be. We will see the second half of the year controls the majority of this revenue, and so we'll keep an eye on that and let you know more in the third quarter. General use, this is an exciting number for us to see. This represents businesses' investment back in themselves, so it's nice to see that number grow, and we're hoping that that continues. As you can see overall, this is a relatively small dollar amount for the city, but it is key, and it does sometimes give us an idea of what the future looks like. Take a look at all of our other funds. The majority of items compared to budgets, we're doing quite well. We do have a monitor light on parks. Again, this is reflective only of what we've been talking about in our theme tonight of the inflationary increases year-over-year. They are feeling tremendous pressures to continue to offer the same services they were offering. They're doing a wonderful job. You will hear more about this in this upcoming budget. Housing, you see a monitor light on that, and that relates to the growing need that we have, and we just cannot get enough money in. Carrie and the team are doing an unbelievable job of getting grants, and every grant we get feels like we could have double that number and still not meet the needs. And so we have a monitor on it only because of that. They are not spending beyond their budget, only to reflect that the challenges are immense. Capital projects, coined CIP by us. You will notice warning lights both on the expenditures and year-to-date. Again, these are just pressures that we have to finish the projects we have going today, not even looking forward to the projects we have on the books. And then monitor light on solid waste. Council earlier approved the ability for us to change the revenues coming in, to continue to offer the services that we are offering, specifically large item pickup and the overtime related to do that. And so this light will go away as we move forward. But I just wanted to reflect today and how it looks today. And then on risk management, we just have a couple more cases that the legal team is finishing up, and we're hoping that those continue to go well. They've been going well, and these lights will come off. So any questions on our funds before we move into investments?
Mr. Marriott, do you have any questions?
No.
Okay, thank you. You may continue, Mr. Archer.
Thank you. Moving into investments, again, this is a snapshot of our investment portfolio. I do want to point out, in my upper left, our portfolio performance. And so you will notice, from 2023 of June to 2024, that our portfolio yield has grown from 2.16 to 2.41. That doesn't seem like a lot, but in our world, where safety is our first concern, that's a pretty big jump in a year's period of time. You'll also see our outside provider has made an even larger jump. And the reason for that is they're able to go out further on the duration. So while we're a short-term liquid investor, they can be out three to five years. And so they're able to lock in this larger investment environment, and this outpacing should continue for the next year to two years. Jumping over to our investments, one of the items previous councils had asked for, and we had made a policy where they allowed us to invest in A-, and triple-B-rated options, and to continue to provide that information to council. So here is a list of the ones that we are in currently. And again, you will notice companies that should be very familiar to all of you. And finally, one of the items that was asked for is a constant upgrade on our grants and the activity that we have been doing as an organization. So you will see that we have a little over $1 million in the works, preparation, meaning that we haven't submitted yet. Pending, just short of $12 million, so we're waiting to hear from a lot of different agencies. Fingers crossed. We have been rejected by a couple for about $154,000, and then a little over $3 million awarded. So that's a very good year. This is for this year only, and so while these numbers are large, they're not where we need to be, but we're working hard at it. So that was very quick, and I realize, not very in-depth.
Councilmember Frey.
Any other questions?
Yes. Thank you. From the grants, what department is getting the most of those grants? Is it housing?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you. Did that include the, I believe it was about $2 million from the DOLA for?
Yes.
Perfect. Wonderful. Congratulations again, Ms. Espinoza and her entire team, on that one. That was a big win.
Yeah.
Councilmember Marriott, do you have any questions?
No.
All right, thank you very much. I see no other lights, Mr. Archer.
We appreciate your time tonight. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
All right. Next, I will open the public comment on issues not scheduled on this evening's agenda. For you folks with us this evening in the audience, I believe all of these are for an item on this evening's agenda, which we will handle during that hearing time. Is there anyone in the audience this evening that would like to speak on an item not on this evening's agenda?
We did have one.
Oh, please, come up then. Tell you what, Mr. Bradley, since you signed up, why don't you go first, and then ma'am will take you next. Welcome, Mr. Bradley.
Thank you.
I will ask you to remember that this is your opportunity to address the city council, not others who may be in the audience this evening. So name, home address, and we look forward to what you have to share with us this evening.
Dan Bradley, 8047 Field Court. This, I'm trying to address the homelessness situation again. I know this has been discussed several times. I don't really approve of any of the cities, meaning Golden, Wheat Ridge, Lakewood, or Arvada, doing the Nevada program, or navigation, sorry, navigation program individually. The county put up $6.5 million towards this subject, and if each of the city council members would join with the other three cities, so there'd be all the Congress, all of the council members, would go to the county and ask them to take it upon themselves to do this navigation program, instead of spending $10 to $20 million each to do this for each of the four cities, and then have to sustain these programs indefinitely, it doesn't make sense. You know, we need to take, for example, out by I-70 and Sixth Avenue or something, unincorporated Jefferson County. There's an RTD there. They can commute anywhere they need to go. They would have the opportunity to get the training. They're not going to be in downtown Arvada or in the middle of a very densely populated area in Lakewood or Wheat Ridge, et cetera. We need to focus on working smarter, not harder, and not burning up all this money in four different places. I'm not saying not to do it. I'm saying to do it in a more intelligent way. That's my two cents. We need to start thinking about, long-term, how much money are all the taxpayers in all four of those cities going to have to pay over and over and over when they could have had one location, had all the same services? We're not dividing this up in multiple different layers and rehiring, rehiring four times, all the same people. It just doesn't make sense to me. And I really would appreciate if you would at least think about that and consider it before you jump off in any particular direction and see if we can do something that helps the taxpayers, and it also helps the homeless, if that's the direction you want to go. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bradley. All right. Ma'am, I'll go ahead and invite you up. Three minutes, please state your name and home address for the record.
Linda Pettit, 8150 Reno Drive in Arvada. My original concern was the roundabout that they put in near the grade school there on Balsam Street. Everybody who drives 57th seems to think it's a through street for them, and anyone in that circle, I saw a guy tonight just about get hit because a guy was coming straight, and a guy was trying to go around it correctly, and he didn't want to wait for that guy to go around. He was already in that. I think they should put a light there because of the children. I don't think that's a very safe venue for any pedestrian, let alone a bunch of kids that are out. And also, I'd like to address one homeless thing. I think the majority of the people that I've seen, I live right off of the railroad, is right in front of my front yard. So we've dealt with the horns from the light rail consistently, and they're better now. They're trying really hard. But also, we have the homeless out there. They leave dirty underpants, they leave socks, they leave liquor bottles out there right in my private road. It says "private road." They walk down it, they sleep there. I've had to call the police twice on some drunks and some drug addicts that were sleeping down in the area right in front of my neighbor's house. So I don't think those people are going to want to be put in one spot. I think they like to beg off of people and drink their liquor and shoot their drugs and do whatever they want. Just my opinion, just in a, don't shoot the messenger. Anyway, I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else in council chambers who would like to address during this time? Seeing none, Mr. Louis, do we have any on Zoom this evening?
We have one.
All right.
Chris Allred.
All right, please. Mr. Allred. Mr. Allred, are you potentially muted? Can you hear us?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. You have three minutes. Please state your full name and home address for the record, and you may share your thoughts with us whenever you're ready.
All right, thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. Hi, my name is Chris Allred, and I'm commenting on behalf of Rocky Mountain Peace and Justice Center in Boulder, Colorado, 3970 Broadway, Suite B5. And I was hoping to, first of all, thank Commissioner Mormon for his steadfast leadership around Rocky Flats issues. I think that he's done a really good job listening to the community and hearing people regarding public health issues associated with Rocky Flats, former nuclear bomb plant located nearby Arvada. And hopefully, most people in the community are aware of this history, and I think one of the biggest challenges we face today are people just don't know. People who are new to the area don't know about Rocky Flats. And I'm sorry, I'm not seeing a timer here. If someone could please give me a 30-second warning, that would be helpful to wrap up.
Yep.
Okay, thanks. So just going back, I'm speaking tonight regarding the Rocky Mountain Greenway, which is a mountain bike trail proposed to go through Rocky Flats. And this has been a topic of controversy between regional governments since 2016, and we have advocated against building this trail through Rocky Flats because it risks stirring up contaminated soil into the air, plutonium, americium, uranium, many other contaminants, and the most dangerous pathway is through airborne exposure to these particles. So more recently, to share an update, Westminster City Council held a study session about the Rocky Mountain Greenway, and the evidence continues to become more clear that it is not a wise public health decision to be allowing that area for recreation. There are other precedents in the region from seven local school districts who have banned field trips to Rocky Flats. If our school districts are saying that they don't want children recreating there, why should local governments be allowing recreation at Rocky Flats? It does not have proper warning signage for people who may be more vulnerable, and it's just a disservice to the community to be placing people at risk out there. So I would ask that Arvada please take a closer look, now that other local governments are taking a closer look, and withdraw from the Rocky Mountain Greenway. I believe Jefferson County, if they haven't already, will be asking for a check or some funds for the project. It's also, Arvada, please hold a public hearing or a study session before writing that check to Jefferson County. Make sure that you're on the same page as the other local governments who are reconsidering this project. I can say that I think, from what I've observed through the years, that the only reason this project has made it this far is through manufactured consent. The people, once they learn the truth about Rocky Flats, they do not want this project. And it has received several different tactics to be hidden from the public or received biased presentations.
10-second warning, sir.
All right, well, I'll just wrap up and say thank you very much for your time, and please withdraw from the Rocky Mountain Greenway. I'd be glad to meet with members of the council to discuss this further. Thank you again. Have a good evening.
Thank you very much for joining us this evening. Mr. Louis, do we have any other? All right, then I will close that portion of public comment, and I will open up our consent agenda this evening. We have four items on the consent agenda, beginning with R-24-082, a resolution authorizing Amendment Number Six to the Construction Management General Contractor Agreement for Preconstruction Services for the Rehabilitation and Modification of the Filter and Solids Handling Systems at the Ralston Water Treatment Plant, buy-in between the City of Arvada and PCL Construction, Inc., for the purpose of extending the guaranteed date of substantial completion for underdrains in Filters 7 through 9, thereby increasing contract amount from $18,515,985 to an amount not to exceed $19,722,518. R-24-083, a resolution accepting material donations from faith church for use by city staff in connection with homelessness services. R-24-084, a resolution authorizing an agreement between the City of Arvada and DHE Computer Systems, LLC, for goods and professional services relating to citywide workstation replacement in an amount not to exceed $1.8 million. And finally, R-24-085, a resolution authorizing an amendment buy-in between the City of Arvada and SMH West, LLC, for the 12-inch Water Main Zone 5, Indiana Street, Project Number 23-WA-20, in an amount not to exceed $2,961,361. Councilmember Frey.
Thank you. I move that R-24-082 through R-24-085 be approved.
Thank you. Councilmember Marriott, I'll ask you for a voice vote.
Yes.
Thank you. That item passes 7 to 0. Next, we have resolutions. I will open up the hearing for, or the resolution for R-24-086, a resolution authorizing an agreement for subordination of deed of trust between the City of Arvada, Vance Street Flats, LLLP, and the Colorado Housing and Finance Authority for the Vance Street Flats project. I believe our presenter this evening is Ms. Carrie Espinoza, our housing manager. Welcome, Ms. Espinoza.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Vance Street Flats is a 50-unit affordable housing development at 5854 Vance Street. The City of Arvada loaned $200,000 to the developer, Vance Street Flats, LLLP, in August of 2022. At that time, Vance Street Flats, LLLP, closed only on a construction loan that had a two-year term. The loan's purpose was to fund the majority of the construction costs. Now that the construction of Vance Street Flats is complete, the developer is ready to close on its permanent 30-year loan with CHAF. The proceeds of this loan, combined with the tax credit equity proceeds, will pay off the construction loan. The developer is scheduled to close on its permanent loan in late August 2024. The lender, the Colorado Housing and Finance Authority, is requesting that the City of Arvada subordinate its $200,000 loan on the property. Arvada subordinate its $200,000 loan on the property. The city team recommends approval of this agreement. Josh Russell with the Vance Street Flats Development Team is here virtually to help answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Councilmember Frey.
I'll make the motion. Do you have any questions?
Mr. Marriott, do you have any questions? I see your hand.
I do.
All right.
Ms. Espinoza, the question I have, a couple of questions. So first of all, you mentioned that they're now closing on their permanent mortgage with CHAF and also have achieved their tax credit, I don't know what you'd call it, sale or liquidation, or turned it into cash. Can you give us the amounts of those?
Mr. Russell, are you on the call?
Yes, I am, Carrie. Sorry, I was just unmeeting myself. Good evening. Yes, I could give those amounts. The loan that was referenced a moment ago with CHAF that we're now getting ready to close on would be for $3.4 million. And the tax credit equity in total is about $11.4 million. I think those are the two amounts that you were asking about.
That's correct. And is the, are the tax credit equity, have those tax credits been sold, or how does that equity get realized? What's, how, tell me how that.
Oh, yes.
I believe those tax credits are over 10 years, correct?
That is correct. And so our partner in the project is Wells Fargo Bank. They own 99% of the project, and so 99% of all the tax benefits, in this case, primarily the tax credits themselves, but also depreciation, you know, flow to them in proportion of their ownership interest. And in return for those tax benefits, they've invested the $11.4 million I alluded to earlier. Not all of that cash has yet been invested. As Carrie mentioned a moment ago, the final tranche of that funding is coming in concurrent with our term loan closing, at which point we'll pay off our construction loan. And at that juncture, be stabilized and off to the races for the next 30 years.
Okay. So tell us that the total, then, of the tax credit portion in total, so the amount that's been invested and the amount that's still coming, is it, is that that $11 million you're talking about?
The, I don't have the schedule right in front of me, sir, the pay-in. We probably have about another $3 or $4 million yet to come in. If you give me a second, that's on a little bit more detail I didn't have right in front of me, so I apologize. But I can find that here in a moment. Was that your question, kind of the pay-in schedule, Dan?
Yeah, yeah, just, you know, I guess it's, and this isn't for you, this is more for our team. You know, when we're asked to make financial decisions for the city about subordinating a loan, obviously, the taxpayers are taking on more risk, becoming in a subordinate position. Not necessarily against that, but I think we should be able to evaluate that accurately when these come up. And the material that I was provided before the meeting, of course, that didn't, was not there. And so the only thing I have available to me at this moment is to ask you questions like this. So not an attempt to grill you on these things. I think this is more for our team's knowledge that we probably ought to be provided this information in detail, so that not only us, but the taxpayers know what their risks are in this particular case, just like any investor would do in any financial transaction. You know, if this was a personal transaction by me, I would absolutely not invest with this much information. And so I don't think the taxpayer should either. So anyway, that's just my editorial, but if you don't have the numbers straight at hand, that's totally fine. I do have one last question, and that would be, if we're subordinating, which position are we subordinating into? Are we subordinating into a second, a third, or deeper than that?
No, you're going to end up in second position behind our first, the first mortgage lender, CHAF.
Okay. And, but we're ahead of, there's another lender who's put money in, a couple hundred thousand dollars or something like that, or $700,000.
Yeah, the Division of Housing, but you're going to end up ahead of that, sir.
Ahead of that, okay. Got it, thank you.
Thank you very much. And just a clarifying question, because there were a lot of numbers there that could be confusing for folks who don't have packets right in front of them. How much is the City of Arvada's loan here being subordinated for? What's the total amount?
It's $200,000.
Thank you, Ms. Espinoza, $200,000. Thank you. And can you please remind us, the population, just for our taxpayers' benefits, they should know what they're getting for their dollars. So obviously, this is an affordable housing project. Can you remind us who the tenants of this building are?
It's a 50-unit affordable housing project. It's a combination of one and two-bedroom units at the property. Josh, is there more detail that you would like to provide as well?
Well, everybody there is earning less than 60% of the area median income. We also have a few families that are there that are receiving Section Eight vouchers, so they're earning below 30% of the area median income. So a pretty big spectrum of, you know, income levels and rent levels present at that project.
But it's primarily families, working professionals, who just may not have high salaries. It's workforce housing?
That's exactly correct, yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. If there's no other questions, Councilmember Frey, you have the motion.
Sure. And just to clarify, the 60% AMI for our four-person family is about $70,000, so just for visualization.
Seventy, not 7,000.
Seventy.
Yeah, seventy.
Did I say seven? No, $70,000, sorry. Okay. I move that R24-086, a resolution authorizing a subordination of deed of trust agreement between the City of Arvada, Vance Street Flats, LLLP, and the Colorado Housing Finance Authority be approved.
Thank you. All members will count their vote. Mr. Marriott, if you'll cast a voice vote.
Let me make a comment first.
Please.
And then I'll be happy to vote. My vote is no, and I want to, I want to make a comment as to why. You know, when we're asked as city council members to evaluate these types of financial actions by the city, I think it's important that we're, that we have everything we need to be able to make these decisions. And as I just mentioned in my previous question, in my own private investing life, I would never take this action, given the information that I have. And so this isn't saying anything negative potentially about the project. I frankly don't know enough to be able to make this decision. I will encourage our team to, in the future, as you bring these things through, to make sure that we're provided with complete financial information on this, so that we can make good decisions. And I think the fact that this is the public's money doesn't mean we should treat it any differently than we would if it's our own. So for that reason, my vote is no.
Thank you, Councilmember Marriott. All other votes have been, oh, Councilmember Davis.
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Espinoza. I've only been on council for a very short time, but I do remember you providing a lot of these numbers, you and the young man online, providing a lot of these numbers to us, and also the reasoning behind it, efforts that the city has made. So I thank you for that. Because I had that background information, I will be voting yes.
Thank you. All votes have been cast. That motion passes six to one with Councilmember Marriott via dissenting vote. Thank you very much. Appreciate it, Ms. Espinoza. Now I will open the resolution for R24-087, a resolution authorizing an intergovernmental joint agreement and home consortium agreement between Jefferson County, Colorado, the City of Lakewood, Colorado, and the City of Arvada, Colorado.
Thank you. The Federal Home Investment Partnerships Program, or HOM, provides formula grants to states and localities that use the funds to support a wide range of activities, including building, buying, and/or rehabilitating affordable housing for rent or homeownership, or providing direct rental assistance to low-income households. Home funds are awarded annually as formula grants to participating jurisdictions. Counties qualifying as urban counties may form a consortium with one or more geographically contiguous local government units. Metropolitan cities that qualify for a separate entitlement grant may be included in the consortium by entering into a home agreement with the urban county. In 2012, Jefferson County qualified as an urban county under federal regulation and formed a Jefferson County Home Consortium. The cities of Wheat Ridge, Golden, and Edgewater, and the towns of Lakeside and Morrison are served under the urban county. As entitlement communities, the cities of Lakewood and Arvada must join the home consortium to allow Jefferson County to use home funds in their communities. In 2013, the City of Lakewood joined the home consortium. The City of Arvada is not a member of the Jefferson County Home Consortium, meaning that JeffCo is limited in using home to support affordable housing in Arvada. The city team is interested in joining the consortium. Arvada's participation in the home consortium is estimated to add $200,000 to $250,000 annually to Jefferson County's home grant allocation. As the participating jurisdiction, Jefferson County will administer the grant, meaning that the city team will not need to dedicate additional staff to support this grant. It will require Arvada to adjust its program year for the CDBG grant from the calendar year to follow the county's program year, which is June through May. This opportunity has been discussed with the Arvada Housing Advisory Committee, and the committee supports this partnership with Jefferson County and Lakewood. The city team recommends approval of this agreement.
Thank you. Councilmember, I'll open it up for any questions, comments, or action. Councilmember Frey.
How is this funding different than federal funding through HUD that is like CBGG funding? So why is it so specific that we need to opt into this?
It's a separate bucket. It falls under Community and Planning Development Programs under HUD, but CDBG is a completely separate grant. Home is separate in and of itself. And with the home grant, HUD provides funding to the participating jurisdiction, whereas with CDBG, if you qualify as an entitlement community, you automatically get it. But with this, it's restricted to participating jurisdictions. So there's fewer areas that qualify. They want us to join under a consortium agreement.
It just seems that a lot of the federal funding that comes down, there's so many very specific buckets, even in the Housing Department, that even you and your team have expressed how hard it is to apply for all these grants and be a part of all these different programs, rather than having a more streamlined bucket from HUD. So, you know, while I'll support something like that, it just can be frustrating to see how challenging it is to find the funds and be part of different programs when it's all around housing.
Right, right. And they all come with different reporting requirements behind it all. The advantage, I believe, for us with this grant is that the county's taking on those reporting requirements, so it will fall on the county to do so. So I think that that's a win for us in this particular case, is it won't add that level of burden on us to do the reporting.
Thank you very much. Mr. Marriott, do you have any questions?
I do. Ms. Espinoza, the question I have is, if we were to enter into this consortium and Jefferson County gets the home funds, is there any guarantee that any portion of them would be spent in Arvada?
There is, so, that's a good question. They, so.
Mr. Marriott, camera, I'm spot on.
Sorry about, sorry about that, it's propped up on my steering wheel.
So as members of the consortium, we would come together to evaluate the pipeline of projects in the various communities. And we, there is a scoring criteria, and that's something that we're going to get into, into more detail, as far as what projects within Jefferson County need the funding sooner than others. And so while we can argue for the allocation of $200,000, $250,000 to be used in Arvada annually, it may be a benefit to support a different project in another jurisdiction for that program year, and then request more than our annual allocation in the following year. So I think it's going to be up for discussion between the consortium members, what projects make sense for this particular program year for funding. Because as we know, with the development projects, they, they may not need funding this year, but they may need it next year. So how can we prioritize those projects to support more development throughout the county?
So are you saying that it's possible that the consortium members could get together and decide to spend all the money in one of the other jurisdictions one year and spend none of it in Arvada? Is that possible?
It is possible. If we do not have a project in the pipeline that needs funding for that particular year, we could suggest that they allocate it to a project in Lakewood, a project in Wheat Ridge, but then request that future year's funding be allocated to an Arvada project.
Okay, but there's no way, you know, we would be a minority partner in this consortium. There's no way to guarantee that if we did that, the next year, we would be the one that would get the funding. We could be passed over again by the consortium if they feel there's something of higher value, irregardless, correct?
It's possible, but we don't have that type of partnership with Jefferson County. Jefferson County's been a very strong partner to work with, with CDBG and some of the other grants, that I feel like we would have a strong voice in those conversations. Could it happen? Yes. But I don't think that that's going to be the case with this consortium. There's mutual benefits to all parties, and we've been working very well together.
Okay. Let me ask you another question. We have applied for the competitive pool of these home funds in the past, correct?
Yes.
And we've been successful achieving them through the competitive process, correct?
Yes.
Okay. If we get into the pool with Jefferson County, are we eliminated from applying for and receiving the pool, the competitive funds?
No, we're not.
So you can do, you can do both?
You can.
Okay. Will we continue to do that?
Yes, as needed, absolutely.
Okay. That's all the questions I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Davis.
Thank you. So as I read through the information that you provided us on the financial impact, the statement reads, there is no financial impact related to this agenda item. Is that correct?
Yes. And when I put that in there, meaning that there isn't any sort of expenditure on our part related to this, it would bring revenue in, but it's going to the county. It's not an allocation directly to us.
And that includes staff time, too. So you wouldn't have your staff having to do the reporting and all that goes around with grants, correct?
Correct. I mean, there will be some staff time needed in order to change our program year, but once we get through that, the staff requirements are minimal.
Oh, that's great. And so in terms of supporting a program in another jurisdiction, if somebody has something maybe shovel-ready in another part of the county, and Arvada sees some value in it, for example, as was presented earlier, if we saw something moving closer to a transit hub or a transit line that we might want to support, that would be a great use of that funds if Arvada is not in a position where we're ready to apply those funds. Is that kind of the gist of it?
It is.
A really supportive city within the county to support these kinds of programs?
Yeah, in our discussions with Jefferson County and with Lakewood, we all want to support one another. Obviously, we want to prioritize projects in Arvada, but if the timing is not right for us to allocate the funding, then let's support our partners and allocate the funding to them, so they can get their projects done.
Thank you. I think that's great partnership.
Thank you.
Thank you. I see no other lights, so I will accept a motion. Sure. Councilmember Frey, thank you very much.
Right. I move that R24-8087, a resolution authorizing an intergovernmental joint agreement and home consortium agreement between Jefferson County, Colorado, the City of Lakewood, Colorado, and City of Arvada, Colorado, be approved.
Thank you. Councilmember Pfeiffer.
Yeah, I just want to say, this is not unusual for it to happen. Dr. Cog works the same way for Transportation Improvement Plan. It's a pool of money, and we don't always get the money. I think I was on that board for 10 years, and probably eight out of the 10, we didn't really get any big projects. But we were a regional partner, all roads connect, just like the homeless and some of the low-income, it's not just an Arvada thing, it's a regional thing. So I'll be supporting the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Pfeiffer. Mr. Marriott.
Yeah, so I will be voting no on this. I can't see a reason why we would be part of some dedicated funds without any kind of agreement in place about an allocation of where they go and where they get spent. And in fact, I think our own efforts are far superior by asking for funds out of a grant pool that we're successful in very frequently, when we need it, as we need it, rather than having stuff that automatically either comes our way or that we have to, we have to compete with our neighbors for. So for that reason, I'm a no on this. So for that reason, I'm a no on this.
Thank you for casting your vote. Mr. Marriott, all votes have been cast. That passes six to one with Councilmember Marriott being a dispenting vote. That closes our resolutions portions this evening, and next I will open the public hearings portion of the agenda. The first public hearing on this evening's agenda is CB 24-009, An Ordnance Repealing and Reenacting Chapter 50 Irrigation and Drainage of the City of Arvada City Code, Ordinance Number 4875. And our presenter this evening is Mr. Jacob Moyer, our Stormwater Administrator. Mr. Moyer.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Updates to Chapter 50 Irrigation and Drainage of Arvada's Municipal Code are proposed to comply with current federal and state environmental regulations. This will also include updates to the city's stormwater program that impacts construction site disturbance permits, updating the associated requirements and fees. The proposed program updates also allow the city to become a qualifying local program with the Colorado Department of Health and Environment, or CDPHG, that allows the city to control permit administration and oversight in lieu of CDPHG for all projects resulting in five acres or less of land disturbance. Chapter 50 of Arvada's Municipal Code has not been updated since 2007, including the associated permit fees. The proposed ordinance, sorry, the proposed ordinance revisions close the gaps in language, address compliance with federal and state regulations, and modify and evolve stormwater program elements to better align with the city's strategic goals and resources. I will mention, public postings of the proposed city code and stormwater program updates included email correspondence to the list of developers, contractors, and engineers on file within the Community and Economic Development Department. A virtual public office hours were held on July 18th and August 1st to discuss proposed updates, including any questions or concerns from the public, and then posting of the city council agenda. The Arvada team recommends that the city council approve CB 24-009, An Ordnance Repealing and Reenacting Chapter 50 Irrigation and Drainage of the Arvada City Code. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moyer. Now, I anticipate everyone this evening is here for our next item, but is there anyone in chambers this evening that would like to provide public comment on this item? Seeing none, Ms... Oh, we do? Please. Once again, full name and address for the public record. You have five minutes.
Yeah, this is Dan Bradley, 8047 Field Court, Arvada. I'm in favor, I'm going to vote, I prefer to vote yes on this. My position is that citizens need to be able to carry concealed weapons.
Mr. Bradley, that is for our next item. I'm so sorry.
Oh, I thought you were trying to say, I'm sorry.
This is for our irrigation and drainage item.
I'll come back.
Please do. We'll see you in a few minutes, Mr. Bradley. Is there anyone here for irrigation and drainage? Really, you're shocked, Councilmember Davis? Mr. Louis, do we have anyone on Zoom this evening to testify on this item? With that, I will close the public comment portion of this hearing and open it to council Mr. Pfeiffer, you were first on the button.
If there are not any questions, I'll make the motion.
Councilmember Farray, you have your light on.
Go for it. Okay. I move that Council Bill 24-
Wait, I have a question. Sorry.
Oh, you do?
You have the motion reserved, Mr. Pfeiffer.
I know you're eager. So the, we still have to apply for the state-level permit in addition to the city-level permit. Is that right?
So for the projects that are five acres or less of project disturbance, you only need to apply for a city permit. Those that are larger will have to apply for both.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Mayor Pro Tim Mormon.
Thank you, Jacob, for the presentation and for your work on this. And actually, my question is necessarily related to the changes that are being made. I support those. And my question is more about just in general stormwater, because I had a constituent ask me this week, in which in my district, there's places where the unincorporated Jefferson County pops up. And so I'm really curious about how we handle stormwater in those areas, because my constituent is actually an Arvada resident, but his property lines next to a whole bunch of Jefferson County, in which there is no stormwater. And so he's claiming he doesn't have stormwater services that he's paying for from the city. So I'm curious how that works.
Yes, thank you for the question. I was actually able to look at this request today, and we will be following up in detail with this. There's city code that outlines requirements and exemptions from the fee being applied to each property, so we will, we will be following up on this specific item.
I appreciate that.
Of course.
Mr. Marriott, do you have any comments or questions?
I'll have a comment after the motion's made.
Thank you. Mr. Pfeiffer, you have the motion.
I move that Council Bill 24-009, An Ordnance Repealing and Reenacting Chapter 50 Irrigation and Drainage of the Arvada City Code be approved on final reading number 4875, in order published by title only.
With that, Mr. Marriott, you have a comment?
I do. So I'm going to vote yes on this. However, I do want to, I do want to note that this council spends an inordinate amount of time talking about housing and housing affordability, and this is just another one of the many small actions we seem to take on a very consistent basis that raise the cost of housing. And, you know, we didn't have much of an in-depth discussion on that particular point, and so I just want to point it out that, you know, at some point, if it's more expensive to produce housing, it raises the price of all housing. And, you know, we seem to be able to take it when it's our fee or our sandbox. We, we're okay with making that more expensive, but yet if it's a landowner who wants more money for their land or whatever, we worry about that, and we think that somehow that that doesn't seem to work. I, my suggestion is, is that each time we face one of these decision points that makes housing more expensive, that we look at it through that lens, which we don't seem to do. And it says to me either, either housing affordability is our number-one issue, or maybe it really isn't, and it's just something we like to say. But in this particular case, we're going to make housing more expensive for everybody, regardless of where you are on the spectrum, from the lowest to the highest. And, you know, I think for, there's some good reasons, but we didn't do any work trying to, trying to mitigate that or soften the blow there. So I am voting yes, because I do think these stormwater things are important, but I do want to note that this, sometimes we have our priorities working against each other.
Thank you. Councilmember Davis.
Yes, thank you for this. You know, I love my infrastructure. And I do think it was explained to us that, that the stormwater fees are to protect the health, human health, and the environment, which is very important. Not to mention, some of the administrative costs that go along with doing business in the city have increased, and we just have not kept up with those. And so just raising the fees just a little bit, which will, it appears, people who are disturbing land, their fee will increase. Those of us who are already, oh, I was going to say disturbed. Those of us who are already in place and are not disturbing anything or are not increasing our impervious area may just have a little bit of an increase. And nothing, not saying that a little increase is, cannot make an impact on one's budget, but it's an increase that doesn't really look like something that we're doing to other utilities. So I think that I will be voting yes, because we are behind in modifying our fee structure here in Arvada.
Thank you. Mr. Marriott, if you'll log your formal vote?
Yes.
All right, that passes seven to zero. Thank you very much, everybody. And next, we have our main attraction of the evening. However, due to the fact that we have several people in the chambers for public comment, I'm going to call for a five-minute break, so everybody can go to the potty before we get to the main event. We will reconvene at 7:18. It's got to be a good, absolutely good one. It's a good situation. And I'm sure that's what it was. Knocked it off, knocked it off. It's a, you know, it's obvious, so I'm pretty sure that is. Welcome back, everybody. Thank you for a short break. So in the interest of this public hearing item, I am going to go ahead and let the public know that we're going to restrict public comment to three minutes per person, and I'll give a few additional housekeeping items as well. And with that, I will go ahead and open the public hearing portion of CB 24-010, An Ordnance Permitting Concealed Handgun Permit Holders to Lawfully Carry a Concealed Handgun at the Arvada City Hall located at 8101 Ralston Road, Ordinance Number 4876. Ms. Morris, our city attorney, has this item.
Thank you, Mayor Simpson. On May 31, 2024, Governor Polis signed Senate Bill 24-131, which enacted color-revised statute 1812-105.3, unlawful carrying of a firearm in government buildings. This statute was effective on July 1 of 2024. The statute prohibits anyone subject to limited exceptions from carrying a firearm, whether openly or concealed, on the property of certain government buildings. Arvada City Hall is subject to this statute. The statute provides that a local government may enact an ordinance, regulation, or other law that permits a person to carry a firearm on government property that is otherwise subject to the statute. City Council requested that staff prepare for its consideration, an ordinance which would opt out Arvada City Hall from the statute. This ordinance would permit persons who hold a valid concealed carry permit to lawfully carry a concealed handgun on Arvada City Hall property, subject to certain limitations with respect to the municipal court and the Arvada Police Department. This ordinance does not negate or affect enforcement of existing Arvada City Code, Section 62-71, which prohibits open carry of all firearms at any city, any property owned by the city or the Apex Park and Recreation District. The Arvada team provides for city council's consideration, CB 24-010, An Ordnance Permitting Concealed Carry, or Concealed Handgun Permit Holders to Lawfully Carry a Concealed Handgun at the Arvada City Hall located at 8101 Ralston Road. Happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you very much. I'm going to open the public comment portion of this evening's agenda, a few housekeeping items in advance. As I mentioned a minute ago, we're going to have three minutes available to each person, simply so that we can get through this meeting in a timely manner, since we have so many, both in chambers, as well as, I understand, online. I do have all of these speakers' forms here. I'm just going to call you in the order in which I have them. These have not been stacked by me in any way. In addition, I want to note that if you were among those, including those watching at home, who emailed in your comments, these have been provided to council. We have reviewed them, and then they will be included as part of the public record. To note, again, I will reiterate the rules, please keep all comments- the rules, please keep all comments directed to us, your elected representatives. Please do not try and address other people who may be in chambers, who may or may not disagree with you. No applauding if you agree, and likewise, no booing. We always try to keep it civil here in Arvada City Hall. It's the Arvada way. So with that, I will go ahead and open up the public comment and call up Ms. Haley Pouchot. Name and full address for the record. Oh, and one more item. Thank you, Councilmember Pfeiffer. Can't believe I forgot this one. If you share the same sentiments as those who went before you, and you don't wish to reiterate information, you can just say ditto, and we understand that. We're not trying to limit you. If you have additional information or points you want to stress, please do so, but ditto also works.
Okay. Hi, my name is Haley Pouchot. I live at one-three-nine-five-nine West Eighty-Ninth Loop. I was born and raised in Arvada. My husband and I have two teenagers. So I explain something to my parents all the time. I explain to them how much harder it is to be a parent today. So I'm asking all of you, please don't make it harder, because it's hard enough. Please help us and protect our families and our kids. Let us not be foolish and believe more guns in our beloved public spaces is the answer, or the myth that a good guy with a gun is going to save the day. I want to be clear, I am not against the Second Amendment. I am one hundred percent for our constitutional rights, but I would like to point out something very important that often gets overlooked. These rights do not exist without regulations and restrictions, and this has always been the case. Freedom of speech does not protect against fraud, defamation, obscenities, child pornography, because these things have been deemed too harmful in our society. The right to bear arms, like all other rights, is not a binary. It is not an either-or. It is subject to various types of restrictions. And when it comes to a deadly weapon, that happens to be the leading cause of death for kids in this country, we better do everything we can to protect them. This is not political. This is public health. This is safety. This is law and order. And really, it's just common sense. I love living in Arvada. I love living in the state, but I do not want to live in fear. Please don't make my life harder. Please protect our kids. I'm not sure there's another right more important than that. And I have another minute, so I'll go ahead and say that maybe not this one thing is going to do anything, right? But we have to do everything. The way I look at this issue of gun violence in our country, it is a five-hundred-piece jigsaw puzzle, and we have to do every piece of the puzzle is an important piece of the puzzle. So yes, it's mental health. Yes, it's restrictions and regulations. Yes, it's communities and people coming together to protect our kids, because that's why I'm here tonight. I don't want to come. I don't want to be doing this. But if we don't do this for our children, then what are we all doing here? Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Nancy E. Murray.
Hello, I'm Nancy Murray. I live at eighty-two-fifty-three Klein Street, and ditto.
Thank you. Ms. Kia Ruiz.
Hello, Mayor Simpson and City Council. I'm a resident of District One, and a gun violence survivor, and I oppose any amendment to the sensitive space law that went into effect on July first. Westminster considered a similar amendment to what you're reviewing tonight, and decided to keep the law as it is after recommendations from their police department, city attorney, and city manager in the interest of employee safety. I am very curious to know what those offices hold as their recommendation for the city of Arvada. I know that we're not in Westminster, but I am wondering why a concealed carry exemption is being considered for city, for the city building and this chamber right here. This is where I kind of get a little nervous here. So Arvada recently demonstrated confusion after a concealed carry incident in Old Town that resulted in a hefty multimillion-dollar settlement with the family. I am, of course, talking about the death of Johnny Hurley in twenty-twenty-one. Johnny was actually a friendly acquaintance of mine. We did food system work together, starting in twenty-fourteen, and I'm still in contact with this family and his friends. In the time between his death and the settlement, with different things I do with the city of Arvada, I was able to hear our local police department essentially smear his name and speculate what actions took place. I do different things in the city, and every time this happened, I would be appalled and angered and know it was inappropriate, as that matter was still in litigation. It was something I couldn't really comment on, but it's something a lot of people had opinions about. This gave our police department an unfair advantage in the court of public opinion with the limited information we had about the case. But we're at the end of that case now, and the city has had to pay out two-point-seven million dollars to his family because of the events that unfolded that day. And there was a lot of confusion. Nothing was done on purpose, but there was confusion with our police department in mistaking the good guy with the gun and exactly who that was, and Johnny lost his life. I do not understand why the city would want to make itself open to that kind of confusion again in the setting. Firearms are a way of life in Colorado, Colorado in the West. We have to figure out a lot more nuances with this these days. As a previous speaker said, guns and gun violence is a leading killer of children in this country. Family side is on the rise, and our society does not seem to be getting any more peaceful with the rise in gun ownership. Guns do not tend to de-escalate volatile situations, and I am asking that you keep sensitive spaces as it's written, so that when I enter this building, and I do enter this building with some frequency, I can focus on what I need to do here and not have another concern about my safety. Please keep sensitive spaces as it is. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Kathy Kelly.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. I am a Westminster resident who is a grandparent here in Arvada. So I'm in the Arvada schools, in the Arvada daycares, enjoying the recreational facilities that you have here, and really spending quantities of time here in the city that has been created, you know, much with the help of the city council. And I can tell you that when we worked with the Westminster City Council on this very same subject, a couple of things came up that were very important. From the city's police chief, who asked the city council to vote no on this, his reasoning had to do with the very subject that has been mentioned before. Is this a good guy with a gun or a bad guy with a gun? I happen to come from a law enforcement family, and surprisingly enough, I don't know how much you know about Moms Demand Action, but many of us are gun owners. I am one of them. And what the police chief spoke of is that he has police, police officers and security within city council meetings, and they have a very specific role to play, keeping you safe, keeping your employees safe, and keeping those constituents safe. And what happens when you also allow concealed carry into the city council chambers is now there is a secondary issue that the police have to consider. Is this a good guy? Is this a bad guy? Does he have a permit? Is this permissible? And it puts your police officers in a more difficult situation, and it also puts all of you, all of us, and your staff in a position of risk. And so for that reason, I'd like to ask you, please vote no, or please retain the bill as it is written, and don't allow concealed carry within this chamber. This needs to be a safe space for everyone, including yourselves and your employees. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ruby Bristol. Name, and let's not forget addresses. I believe I forgot about the last couple. My apologies.
Hi, I'm Ruby Bristol. I live at one-three-four-one, one-three-four-nine West Eighty-seventh Drive in Arvada. I'm twenty-one, and I wasn't planning on speaking, but I came and I just thought it was important to also represent younger people, because I've gone to school in Arvada, and I've lived here my whole life. And being younger, I feel like I grew up in an environment where gun violence was more prominent in, like, public places. And it's something that's very scary and a way that I don't want to live, and I enjoy public spaces where I can feel safe. And so I just think it's important to keep those public spaces safe. And even though it's just like one thing now, opening this up could lead to more spaces where people feel less safe, especially younger people. It's hard being young and growing up with everything's going on and so much violence and everything. And I just don't think we need to divide people anymore and add an aspect of escalation, which I think is what guns do. And I think that they're totally fine, but having them in a place where people want to speak their mind escalates things quite quickly. And I just think it's important to have places where people feel safe, especially younger people, to come and speak their mind and not feel scared all the time. And it's important here, and if we open this up, it could open up other avenues. And when I was going to school, I would know the ways to get out of school, because I knew what could happen. And every place I go, I think about it. And I've always thought about that since I was a kid, and I just don't think it's something that's important. And I don't see any reason why having concealed weapons is something we need in public office buildings, because we wouldn't do it in, like, the White House. We shouldn't do it here. We need to be safe and keep places safe where we can feel safe and speak our minds without fearing for our lives. So, yeah, thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. Leonard Giuliano? Giuliano, I apologize.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm Leonard Giuliano, not Giuliano, and I
My apologies.
I reside at sixty-thirty-seven Estes Court here in Arvada. I'm also a husband, a father, a grandfather, a former hunter, and a gun owner. So I'm here tonight to give my support for Arvada to follow the lead of the state and enforce the Sensitive Spaces Bill, SB twenty-four-one-thirty-one. I'm lending my voice for public safety in Arvada. There's a gun violence epidemic in America, and having guns in sensitive spaces only highlights the threat of gun violence. To opt out of SB twenty-four-one-thirty-one and pass ordinance CB twenty-four-zero-one-zero is bad policy and bad politics. Bad policy because guns are intimidating, dangerous, and potentially lethal. More guns do not equate to a safer environment. Guns in sensitive spaces are a risk escalation and pose a threat to all present. Guns in sensitive spaces is bad politics, because guns are being foisted and forced upon the American public because of the influence of identity politics, dangerous and unreasonable ideology, and the absurd and corrupting influence of the National Rifle Association. There is no need for firearms permitted in Arvada City Hall, in sensitive spaces, or any public spaces for that matter, because they pose an immediate danger and are a threat to public safety. Please support SB twenty-four-one-thirty-one, the Sensitive Spaces Bill, and please do not pass ordinance CB twenty-four-zero-one-zero. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much, Mr. Giuliano.
You're welcome.
Next, and I apologize, I can't make out the last couple of letters of this name. So Michael J. Rumch.
Sorry about the chicken scratch. It's rumbling. Could have been a doctor. Write those prescriptions out that nobody can read. I'm a third-generation Colorado native. I live at seven-six-six-eight Devine Court in Arvada, so west Arvada, towards Elkhair. Ditto to pretty much everything that's been said here tonight. Clearly, I'm not in favor of it. I think we should, you know, keep the rules as passed by the state legislator. A couple of things to consider. Why would we make an exemption for concealed carry permit in City Hall? That makes absolutely no logical sense, and yet not allow people to come to City Hall with guns on their shoulder or on their hips. Why the exemption? This makes no sense. Some might say, well, because it's my right. Well, as was pointed out, yes, but rights are regulated, and there's no need to come to City Hall with concealed carry. From a practical perspective, how are you going to differentiate people that are walking in this door with a concealed weapon, who have the legal right to do that with the permit, and those who don't? You're going to have to spend money. I just listened to Councilmember Marriott talk about spending taxpayers' money on things that he wasn't supportive of. Why would we want to have to man people out here with metal detectors during all opening hours, when people come in with a concealed weapon, and then you're going to have to have people bring them aside and say, show me your permit? And you're going to have to train those people. You're going to have to have extra people, or you're going to have lines out the back of people coming in potentially. It makes absolutely zero practical sense, from a taxpayer's perspective, to be allowing this to happen. So that's the only point I want to make. I'm a gun owner. My guns are at home. They're in my gun safe where they belong, not loaded. I don't feel any need to protect myself to come when I come to City Hall. In fact, it's probably where I'm going to feel the most protected when I come to City Hall. You know why? Look at these gentlemen back here. They're attached to City Hall. They're trained. They're armed. They're here to protect every single citizen, Arvada citizen, and other people are coming here to do their business. They don't need some John Wayne cowboy hero who thinks that he's going to be the savior of the day, coming to City Hall with his gun, because he feels it's his right or it makes him feel better. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mario Acevedo. Acevedo?
Acevedo.
Thank you.
All right. My name is Mario Acevedo. I live at thirty-one-twenty-one West Thirty-sixth Avenue in Denver. Good evening, city councilors. Thank you very much. Thank you for this opportunity to voice my opinion that you proceed with this ordinance and that you opt out of SB twenty-four-one-thirty-one. I am a father, a grandfather, a military veteran. When I first moved to Colorado, I lived near Eightieth and Pierce, across from Little Dry Creek Park. Both of my sons graduated from Pomona High School. I've since moved to Denver, and I've learned that for good city planning, look at Denver and do the exact opposite, because what they're doing is not working. Representatives from many groups are coming forward urging you to reject this ordinance. Believe it or not, these groups and I share a common goal, and that we all want to live without fear or violence. The difference is that I want policies and laws that actually work, and so do you. So should you. After more than a decade of common sense gun control to include universal background checks, a high-capacity magazine ban, red flag laws, safe storage law, what has been the result? Since Colorado enacted all this gun control, gun homicides have more than doubled. Gun suicides have gone up more than twenty, forty percent. And worst of all, youth gun homicides have more than tripled. If this gun control worked, I'd have nothing to say, but instead, it's been a colossal failure. I live near Federal and Thirty-eighth. There was a double homicide at a local restaurant, still unsolved, a flash mobbed armed robbery of a neighborhood jewelry store, a shooting in a nearby homeless camp, and the son of a family friend was murdered in Globeville. As I was preparing this testimony, I was looking up recent shootings in Denver and stopped because there were too many to count. In Lodo, there have been back-to-back shootings every weekend for the last three weeks. When is common sense gun control start, going to start saving lives? Arvada was incorporated in nineteen-oh-four, and there hasn't been one instance of a concealed carry permit holder coming onto city property and threatening or shooting anyone. Those objecting to this ordinance are resorting to scaremandering, inventing scenarios that haven't occurred even once in a hundred years. Nothing. Prohibiting concealed carry holders will not stop a maniac from coming onto city property and shooting people. We do have an example of such a law failing spectacularly. In twenty-nineteen, in Virginia Beach Municipal Center, a shooter entered a building and opened fire, killing twelve and wounding four. One of his murder victims, Catherine Hafner, had a carry permit and worried about the shooter's erratic behavior beforehand. She thought about bringing her gun to work in case she had to defend herself, but she chose not to, because it would violate city policy. So the rules did nothing to stop the shooter, only to make his victims easier targets. Here's my proposal. You go ahead with this ordinance, and you opt out of SB twenty-four-one-thirty-one as a signal to the Colorado State Legislature to tell them, quit wasting our time with gun control that has done nothing to improve public safety. Give us real leadership and effective laws that will save lives, keep the peace, and stop criminals. Thank you.
Thank you. Corinne Carpenter.
Hello, my name is Corinne Carpenter. I actually live in Lakewood, Colorado. Would you like my address?
Yes, just for the public record.
2563 South Kendrick Court. I, thank you, good evening, for having me. Ditto to many of, in, as far as those who are against this. I do want to say a couple other comments. I have worked and talked to many city councils in past lives in other communities, and I kept hearing over and over again, "This is an issue we want to work on. We want to keep our community safe. We want to provide a safe place. We're waiting for the state. Please contact your state representative, your state senator, and please work on this issue." They came together, they worked on this issue, and they created, through a lot of negotiations and a lot of talk, to create safe places. They've done it. They made this hopefully easier for you and other metro communities to create throughout this area because we are all connected. We can't just have Arvada, like you were speaking before, to other issues. Jefferson County, Jefferson County is ginormous, Jefferson County School District, all of these pieces are interconnected, and opting out is, it's frustrating when I'm hearing other things. Granted, I didn't hear it from this community, but I do want to say that. Another piece I want to say is, speaking to students, I'm a graduate of Columbine High School, and I have heard through these twenty-some years, thoughts and prayers, thoughts and prayers, Band-Aids, let's put in a vestibule, that will stop it. Let's put in bulletproof this, bulletproof that. This is actually something's going to stop something. This is going to provide a safe place where we have law enforcement, we have people who are here to protect this space, in which case we don't have to put in more measures. I, I love when we've actually come together in a policy and agreed to it. The final one I want to make is in concern to how Colorado concealed carry holders, there is a new law in place. However, Colorado concealed carry holders have varying degrees of training based on where they receive their permit. Training frequently doesn't require live-fire training. So a lot of times, this whole safe versus not-safe person, and somebody has that permit but may not actually have the ability to use it as trained. Colorado has implemented new, has implemented new requirements, but they don't take effect until July 1st, 2025. New requirements will require 10 hours of training, including live-fire training, which is positive gun violence prevention. However, that's not in place now, and you still have 12 meetings. So considering all of these pieces, I'm asking you to please keep what the state put in place, and thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. Mindy Moore, 11570 West 70th Place. I am also urging our city council to please not allow concealed carry of firearms in Arvada City Hall and properties. I've been here at City Hall and in these chambers for many years, and with, as we've heard others say, with the presence of at least one or more members of the Arvada Police Department, I've always felt very safe here. We in Arvada may disagree, but we do so respectfully. By allowing concealed carry weapons in this building, I'm afraid that you will only be inviting gun violence, which is something neither our community nor our country needs more of. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have, I think it's Bucy Bristol? Bristol? I'll set that one aside just in case they return.
I continue. Again, 8047 Field Court. I, I'm for this because I feel like a lot of people that are opposed to this are, are like in a theater and screaming "Fire!" There's no fire. The people that have concealed carry weapons have had an extensive background check. I'm not aware of one case in the state of Colorado, and maybe you know of one, but I don't, where somebody that had a concealed carry weapon hurt anybody with a gun or a knife. Not even once. So what are we doing here? We're just making another rule. I understand that a lot of people get killed, and I'm not for that, but that's, has a lot more to do with the prosecutors we elect than it does anything else. If you have prosecutors that repeatedly let people out of jail, even though they've done violent crimes, they don't put them behind bars, they don't do anything to try to limit the amount of crime that they do, and you know they do a lot more crime they don't get caught at, but they still let them walk, it's a rotating door, they just let them back out. Don't punish the innocent. We're not the problem. The problem is the prosecutors that let their doors go round and around and let these people back out again, in the city of Denver and in Jefferson County and in many other urban areas. They've gotten elected with some anonymous funding in many cases, and they don't, they're not treating everybody equal. They're letting the bad guy out, and they're going after the good guy. And the guy that got killed downtown Arvada, he was trying to do the right thing. He ended up to be a victim as well, but that, that wasn't necessarily his fault, it just happened. And that's one case where somebody trying to do the right thing became a victim, but that's a very, very rare incident. So I don't see why you would not vote for this. It doesn't make sense to me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, good evening. So I'm, I'm moderate, and I'm trying to really notice there's not a lot of moderates here anymore. I had the blessings to grow up on a military base, and I had AK-47s, guns, all over. And so when I went to school, I never felt anything except go to school. I don't care about the really great comments, like, "I love this gentleman. He said he feels safe here because of these two men," right? Which I think that says a lot, but what about the private schools and the schools? Those kids don't feel safe because they don't have these men in every classroom. So, great comment, because we feel safe because of them. Now, if you don't want to have guns here besides these gentlemen, that makes sense, right? Because you guys have these guys. But I saw in the amendments and the whole thing about private schools and schools not having concealed carry. Is that correct? Am I...
I'm sorry.
Is that correct?
We generally almost never respond during public comment.
Oh, okay, sorry. That's where I come in, because my son's school do have teachers that have concealed carry. No one knows who they are, we just know they're there. The kids don't know, nobody knows, and it makes the kids feel so much safer. It would be like these gentlemen being in all the classrooms, and the kids can just learn and be kids. So I think there could be some middle ground, but I just feel like there's just no middle ground anymore. It's blah or blah, and it's like, seven-one, six-one, six-one. It's like, how is there just no middle ground anymore? Like, great comments, good data from both sides, and I just feel like not enough knowledge, and we all don't have these gentlemen in every classroom. If you don't want it in government buildings, I get it. Might, you know, that makes sense. But when it comes to the schools and safe spaces to what other people think, then I think there needs to be something. Like, our private school is well-equipped with lawful gun carriers, which we love, and I just don't want that to go away for our kids because we don't have these gentlemen or ladies in classrooms. And I'm a moderate, I'm ninety percent independent, but it's, like the other gentleman said, don't go where Denver's going or Aurora. I feel like that would be great because Arvada is a pretty great place. And to our police officers, Officer Beasley, my biggest regards.
Thank you very much. Bucy Bristol, have you returned? All right, seeing no.
Hello, city council. This is Eric C. Myers. I'm at 65, you know, 6553 West 71st Place, Arvada. As I read through the bill here, I, I am in favor of it because I think even with our police presence in the city council or throughout the building, you know, I think that's great. But I also feel that, you know, there are isolated incidences where a quick-thinking owner in possession of what's known as a permit for Second Amendment is capable of stepping into the moment of action that's required. You know, I think people are blaming guns where that's an inferior thinking. What's really the cause of improper use of gun ownership is mental health. And I think if you really address it and boil it down, it's mental health issues. And so that's where we can catch a lot of the potential gun violence is by covering mental health issues. You know, it, it's really, it's not the gun that's the, the villain, it's the mental health issue that operates that gun. The gun is a tool, just like a knife is, just like a rake is, just like a baseball bat, you know, just like a vehicle, you know? All those are evil, evil items for killing if they're not operated properly. And so we need to get down to the real core problem, and that's mental health. And so, mental health can be controlled through how somebody raises a, a child. Heck, you know, that's where the core values of who we are originate, is through the home environment. So if the parents are not capable, they might be suffering from mental health issues. And that's why I feel we place our focus on getting proper training, proper family-building skills, and we'll see a lot more balanced and healthy participants in our culture through proper guidance and then learning how to be responsible. So, you know, let's, let's pursue liberty, let's not put regulation on liberty. You know, that's what it's about. And never violate the Second Amendment. I mean, I shouldn't even have to have a permit.
Sir, your time has expired. I'll give you about 10 seconds to close.
I'm just saying, I shouldn't have to have a permit because that's an actual constriction on the Second Amendment. You know, that's a free thing that none of us should be frozen from. Anyways, thanks for hearing me, and press on.
Thank you.
My name's Scott Shamblyn, 4085 Independence Court. I support this ordinance. Personally, I believe the agenda item is incredibly important. We should not allow firearms in sensitive spaces, which is why I believe we should prohibit carrying firearms in these sensitive spaces. Appendix carry, aka groin carry, is common practice where a firearm is carried inside the waistband aimed towards the groin, which is perhaps the most sensitive of spaces. Accidents are rare, but to further reduce the chances of a spontaneous gender-affirming combustion or self-neuter, as often, as often called amongst the furry community that parades through Old Town every other Sunday, I believe we should require all firearms to be proudly carried and displayed on the hip as to reduce and deter crime. Your gun is not a crotch goblin. Don't treat it like one. After all, we all go out for pride every, every year. Why not have some pride here? As a member of the lesbian, gender non-conforming man community, it is vitally important that we have the ability to protect, that I have the ability to protect myself and others if the need were to arise. Our firearm policy should be set to the following. Please keep your firearm holstered until a threat arises, in which case dutiful marksmanship is appreciated. This is common sense, and I'm proud to see the Moms Demand alcohol is here pushing for common sense gun practices such as this. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate the witticisms. However, once again, I will remind members to keep all comments directed to council and not at other members of chambers.
Good evening. I'm, I live at 15065 West 52nd Avenue. My name is Julie Johnston. So I just want to correct something that's repeated constantly. The number one leading cause of death from 15 to 19-year-olds is unintentional injuries. And there's a lot that goes into that category. It's not always guns. So the one thing I would like to say is concealed carry individuals have to go through a lot of training. We have liability. You have to take classes. You do have to practice shooting. And the, the individuals that teach it have all of, high level of education and training, and very often are police officers or ex-police officers. And so it isn't the concealed carry individuals that are the threat. There isn't an epidemic of concealed carry individuals coming in and harming people. What I, the biggest point I want to make is criminals and people who are doing nefarious things don't adhere to any of these rules. And you're taking our ability away, or you're suggesting that we lose the ability to defend ourselves in public spaces, when we have undergone training and we understand the liability and the purpose and, and the heavy responsibility of carrying a gun. So criminals, you, there are, the idea is that you're removing gun ownership or the ability to defend yourself and carry, and you're increasing the ability for criminals and people who never abide by any of the rules to have more, more dangerous, create a more dangerous threat for the public. So I, I just think that it's interesting that people who undergo training and understand the liability and everything else and, and how the importance of what you're doing and what you're carrying are the, people feel are the threat, but they don't feel threatened by individuals who don't abide by any rules or any laws. So that's, that's what I want to state. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else in chambers this evening that would like to speak on this item? Seeing none, Mr. Louis, I believe we have someone zoomed? Oh, no, apparently they left us. All right, with that, I will close the public comment portion of this evening's agenda. Thank you all very much for your testimony and for keeping it civil. That really is the Arvada way. We appreciate you. I will now open it to council comments or questions. Councilmember Ambrose.
I appreciate the community coming out and speaking about this. I'm going to be voting no.
Councilmember Ambrose, if you would hold comments on votes until we have a motion on the table. Okay, thank you. Do we have no questions about the ordinance this evening? Councilmember Marriott, do you have any questions about the ordinance this evening?
No.
Okay. Councilmember Pfeifer, I see a light.
Chief, do you want to say anything or no? I mean, we heard all about your partner over in Westminster, but I didn't know if you wanted to talk about our community.
Councilwoman Pfeifer, thank you.
I'd be happy to...
Share some thoughts would be nice.
Share a couple thoughts, thank you. If I can get my microphone...
If I can get my microphone to hold here. Thanks for asking. So I do not have concerns with law-abiding citizens who went through a legal process of obtaining a carried concealed permit with carrying a concealed weapon in City Hall. If done as required, they will not cause harm as they are carrying concealed. From a practical standpoint, we rarely have problems with lawful carried concealed permit holders. As you know, through a recent House bill, they're required to go through training, I believe, eight hours of training, which includes live fire and also a written exam. Also, due to APD efforts and influencing that legislation, we have asked that additional training be required should they get involved in an incident so that they know how to respond when law enforcement comes in after our Old Town incident. And so we rarely, from enforcement standpoint, have interactions with lawful CCW permit holders. And so that's why I'm not concerned that they are able to exercise that right or carry that permit as they come into City Hall.
I have some more questions. Are you aware of any incident dealing with weapons inside City Hall or?
I am not aware of any incident, no.
Or on property?
No.
I think that's questions I have now.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Faray.
Yes, Chief, just one more follow-up question for you is how do you navigate between telling the good guy with the gun with the bad guy again, as someone had mentioned, you know, when someone is in City Hall? If they have a concealed carry, how do you decipher the two or your team?
Yeah, sure. So other than the municipal court, people who come to City Hall aren't, um, so they need to go through the metal detectors up here through court. But other than that, if they keep it concealed, then they are, you know, upholding their CCW permit. As soon as it becomes visible, then obviously it becomes a problem. Permit holders also carry their permits as well. And so, again, it's not a concern as they go through City Hall if they're a lawful CCW permit holder.
Okay, thank you. And Ms. Morris, to confirm, is schools included in the safe spaces?
So the particular statute that we're dealing with right now is only related to government buildings. That's not to say that there aren't other statutes that were passed by the legislature related to sensitive spaces in schools.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Morris, just to quickly follow up on that. I thought this ordinance this evening was specifically for Arvada City Hall and municipal. So we are not dealing with schools, even though they are considered government buildings. We are not dealing with schools this evening.
That is correct. The statute at issue that council would be opting out of if you approve this ordinance is exclusively related to local government buildings where the governing body meets. The executive officer has offices. The mayor has an office, places like that. So we aren't looking, we aren't looking to legislate tonight or asking council to legislate tonight related to anything related to schools.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Davis.
Thank you. So from an operations standpoint, if we were to, um, and to not opt out, if we decided that we were going to prohibit weapons in City Hall, what would that take to do? How much worker power would that be to have to have everybody go through the magnetometer, not just up here at the court, but down by the police and by the main entrance? I mean, is that, what kind of lift would that look like?
How I would first answer that, thank you for the question, Councilmember Davis. We would have to coordinate internally to see what that would look like first before we would allow this. I think when you look at it from the perspective of those who carry concealed weapons, they're abiding by the law by keeping it concealed. If we're prohibiting weapons from our building, we already prohibit open carry of firearms, but we don't actively monitor that. We have signage, and I think that's where we'd have to start, is with appropriate signage, statements with changes to our ordinances to ensure that that would be the case and act accordingly from there. We'd have to look into it further before we can give you a definitive answer.
Councilmember Ambrose.
This is a follow-up item about the school for the city attorney. This would be in effect for Apex Centers, though, right? Not Apex either?
No, it is only applicable, so what we're opting out of tonight, what the state statute covers is only City Hall. And so what the ordinance in front of you tonight would be concerning is whether or not City Council would like to opt out of the state statute, which prohibits carry of any firearm in City Hall. So that's all we're looking at tonight. Our open carry ordinance, it already exists. It's already on the books. We prohibit open carry already in City Hall and also in Apex facilities.
Uh, Councilmember Pfeiffer.
So the law says, that was passed, said any local governing body, including buildings of which offices have elected members, Apex would be elected. So does, what we're doing tonight doesn't affect them? They would have to pass their own?
Correct.
Because it wouldn't be a law in theirs, would they? I just want to kind of understand that a little bit more. Well, they don't, see, the problem with the Apex Center is they don't, they don't have ordinances. They don't, their Parks and Recs Department, they don't. So I don't understand how they would roll into that. So if we pass or opt out, or I know this double negative is confusing, so we'll have to clarify. But if we opt out, does it affect Apex?
It's an excellent question. It's one I may have to research and get back to you. And looking at the state statute, you are correct in that opting out does require passage of an ordinance, regulation, or other law, which Apex does not do.
Do that.
So we'd have to do a little bit more research on that to make a determination. What's interesting, though, about this statute is that it presumes that we are, we can only opt out of the statute to the extent it affects our buildings. So I don't know in this gray area how we pass an ordinance that would opt Apex out because of the way that the statute is phrased.
Well, and it could domino effect down to the metro districts, too.
Correct.
Yeah, Fire District as well. So I wish we could know more, but sometimes the Capitol decides to pass laws that make no sense or not really, you know, give us clarity in this area. I'm a little worried that we don't know what this really means.
Correct.
Because it could be effect to all the other buildings.
Sure. Owned by those other government entities. I think you may have identified an issue that the state legislature did not anticipate when passing this law.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Chief Brady, I would invite you, because as Councilmember Davis noted, to opt out, we have gray area here that we're not certain on. An impact to a Fire District, forgive me, I'm less concerned with Apex and with the metro districts, but the Fire District, I'm wondering, obviously we're police, but what could be an impact there? Do we, or any, do we believe?
I'm not aware, other than what you've just discussed, as possible oversight by the legislation about how that would impact the Fire District, and nor have I talked with them about this.
Thank you. Um, I have a few questions myself, if remainder of council has gone.
All right, my questions include, so a few, I already captured a few of mine, so I appreciate that. Ms. Morris, do we currently allow concealed weapons in the courts? If somebody has a ticket and they have to appear before the judge, are they, if they are a licensed concealed carry permit holder, are they allowed to bring that weapon into the courts?
We do not, we do not allow that. It's the reason that we have the metal detector set up at the entrance just over here in front of the courts.
Would somebody be able to enter through the north entrance of City Hall and come around to the courts for their appearance?
They could theoretically, yes. We try to set up the entrances so that that is discouraged. However, it's possible.
Okay, thank you. And Chief Brady, perhaps this one's for you. Ms. Morris, it could also be for you. You noted, Chief Brady, that we verify the permit holders, that they must carry their concealed carry permit with them?
Yes, they're required to carry that permit with them. And so we would only verify it if we came into contact with them for whatever reason and saw that they were carrying concealed, we can check their permit there.
Perfect. And are the officers trained on what those permits look like? Somebody just couldn't have a forgery or something? Unlikely, I know.
I mean, a lot of documents could be forged, but I think that our officers would be able to work through what's a forgery or not.
Okay, perfect. I know that's extremely unlikely, but nonetheless, just trying to ask the different questions. Ms. Morris, if we were to opt out of this program, could this increase a liability on the city? For instance, if we were to opt out and allow this, and then there was an incident, however unlikely if there was, could that increase the city's liability because we chose to opt out?
It's always possible that we would have an incident where we have some liability. However, given my research on this, I spent hours scouring the internet for incidents similar to the one that we experienced in Old Town. Over the course of many, many years, what I was able to find is, I could only find two others nationally. So I think it would be extremely rare that that would occur.
Okay, thank you. And Ms. Haley, I know, I know the answer to this one, but I feel it is very important to have on the record. How does city team, how does the team feel about this?
Thank you for the question. We did conduct a survey with our employees. Rachel, you can correct me on the numbers that we received. From the responses that we did get from our employee-wide survey, we were evenly split, fifty-fifty.
Yes, that made it a bit of a struggle. And we, and it seemed to be consistent across the various departments. It wasn't that, for instance, the police weighted heavily or one way or another. It seemed fairly evenly split across the survey results.
I don't think that we did an analysis across departments like that. I couldn't tell you off the top of my head how many responses we got from which department, either for or against. But as Ms. Haley indicated, it was split in half. So the number of people who responded to the survey with us asking what their preference would be in terms of council's direction on this ordinance, it was split exactly half and half, half being for, half being against.
All right, thank you. All right, I'm going to, I'm still gathering. Oh, please, Mayor Proton Mormon.
Sorry, I just had a follow-up question or clarification to the conversation that Councilmember Pfeiffer raised about, so the ordinance before us, though, specifically cites City Hall. So the other properties that were being discussed are not impacted by ordinance today, correct?
That is correct. So council has the option, if you want to, to enact ordinances that relate to other city properties. And from a legal perspective, when we're talking about sensitive spaces and gun regulation, regulating sensitive spaces and specifically local government buildings is among the safest type of gun, from a legal perspective. It is the safest type of gun regulation you can implement. So if you wanted to, you could implement restrictions on concealed carry in other buildings that the city owns, or you could decide to allow concealed carry in those buildings. Currently, open carry is not permitted in any, on any city property, any property owned by the city. However, concealed carry, we do not have anything right now that prohibits it. This statute was the exception. When it came into play, it prohibited, would effectively prohibit concealed carry in City Hall. And so that's why we're addressing this today.
Thank you.
Mayor Proton Mormon, did you have anything else? Uh, Councilmember Pfeiffer.
So at least I know when I, when I go to other government buildings, I guess it's not consistent. Do we know how many, or in the metro area, how many folks do not allow any weapons? Because I know some of the Denver buildings, obviously, can't, the Capitol, you can't. Do we know kind of percentage-wise, or is that a mixed bag or?
I do not have that information. I have a little bit of information related to other entities that have opted out or attempted to opt out of this statute that we're talking about tonight. So as I think one of our public comment indicated, Westminster had an ordinance similar to the one that you're considering tonight on its agenda and determined not to opt out. I think it was a four-three vote, so it was relatively close. I think Aurora has one that it will consider, but it has not voted on yet. Other than that, the entities that have passed, that have decided to opt out and allow concealed carry in their equivalent of City Hall are primarily rural towns and counties, the closest of which are like Weld County, Douglas County, things like that.
Thank you. Please, keep going for it, go for it.
So procedural question. If there was a motion to postpone this so we can get more information around the ordinance affecting other, other, other government buildings that have elected officials in them, when we call that back up, do we have to do it again with a public, open to the public to comment again and go through that process, knowing that it might be different? I don't know. I'm trying to think about it. We haven't postponed anything in a while, so.
Yeah. So what our rule says, I anticipated this question.
Oh, good.
What our rule says is that as long as you postpone it to a date certain, we do not have to go through the re-noticing process. So council's decision today, should you make a motion to continue, would be notice to the public, that our public hearing would be continued to another date. So we would look at another business meeting, and in the interim, we could collect some of that information that you're looking for. For instance, what other cities allow concealed carry within their buildings or don't allow concealed carry within their buildings and present that information for City Council.
Well, and if other cities have dealt with their metro districts and Parks and Recs and Fire Districts within their authority.
Yeah, we can check on that as well.
How did they handle that, if they've even thought about that?
We can, we can check on that as well, definitely.
Yeah, because I think, isn't there a deadline on to opt out?
There's not a deadline to opt out. The statute went into effect on July first. So that was the only, essentially what that means is right now, as we sit here, concealed carry is not allowed in this building. So we don't have a deadline to make the opt-out decision. It's just the longer we spend making that decision, the longer concealed carry will be prohibited here. So completely up to council what the timing is. That's the only consequence.
And just procedural, and I don't know if you caught this or not, but if we did opt out and say council wants to reverse that one day, way in the future or whatever, can the state law allow that reversal?
Yeah, absolutely. So the way I read the state law is that we get to make the choice on whether or not we allow carry, people to carry firearms within our City Hall building. And there's also another statute that allows us to make that same decision for our other buildings. It just doesn't make the decision, and it doesn't automatically say that it's prohibited and we have to opt out of it.
So it's not a one, it's not a one-and-done, is basically what I'm asking.
Correct.
Because I know there are some state laws that were passed, and we get like one, one time to make a decision and then, and then be done with it.
Correct. Like the Family Medical League, that was the one-and-done opt-out provision. This one is different from that. So the way we get to make the decision, it's under, as far as the state is concerned, we can make whatever decision we want, and we could go back and forth.
Okay. All right, that's all the questions I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Morris, I have one other question. It's kind of a two-parter. Are we aware, other than our fine police officers, of folks that are employees of Arvada City Hall that concealed carry at this time?
No, I'm not aware of anyone who, who has a concealed carry permit. I'm sure there are individuals who do have a concealed carry permit. From the HR perspective, I've never heard of it being a specific issue. And it's not something that we've collected information on and forced people to identify on that particular issue.
Okay. And is it possible for us to potentially amend the ordinance that could allow staff members that are in the employ of Arvada City Hall to carry, but not members of the public?
You could absolutely do that.
Okay. Councilmember Pfeiffer.
Operational question now, sorry. Trying to think through the scenarios, just from an expense to the city. You could do the honor system like Linda used to, and do that. Or you can do like the other cities that I've been through. You know, every entrance has a metal detector and it's checked and go through. Because I'm trying to think if we, we did that in our entrances, if we allowed permit holders, they'd be pulled aside like the gentleman said there that caught my attention. We'd have to pull them aside, see the permit, otherwise they would have to surrender their gun or put it back in their car or do whatever they do. But, but if we said absolutely none, then it's just the rules of rule, and they just can't come in. I'm just trying to think, like, what impacts cost-wise this may do for us.
So Deputy Manager Wick may have more information on this because I know he has been researching some things. I don't want to speak to it.
Please, Mr. Wick.
We have been in contact with a couple of companies that are using advanced technologies in order to in order to detect potential weapons that would then transmit that information to, for example, police officers that may be on duty or to dispatch or somebody that could monitor that. And then the officers would, or our security team could make decisions based upon what information that they have. By using tools of technology of this sort, essentially what we're talking about is the use of radar in order to do that. It could save a lot of staff time in terms of having to physically check that. But it, it has just been a conceptual conversation. We haven't really gone down the road far enough to understand whether this is something that we would actually put into place or not. And of course, we would always come back to the council before we did something like that. But there are possibilities out there of using technologies that could reduce the amount of time that it would take for staff to, you know, do these clearances as, as folks are coming into the building.
Chief Brady.
Mayor Simpson, I wanted to add to a question you asked earlier about employees who had CCW permits. I am aware in my time here at the city, in the department over 30 years, that we have had CCW permit holders that were employees who carried on the job. And basically where we, we didn't intervene if those guns were concealed. However, if they were displayed or seen by other employees, then that became a employment issue.
Could you actually walk me through what the response process would be if, for instance, we had someone in permitting department and at the front desk and someone was really upset about their sewer tap or something else, and they came and they were concealed carry, but suddenly the gun is there to go to the intimidation factor? Could you walk me through what the police's process on that would be?
So help, I just want to make sure I'm clear. So if we had a disgruntled citizen over whatever issue and we had an employee who had a CCW permit, are you asking what their interaction should be?
Actually, no, I'm asking what the response would be from APD. So if a citizen came in, they were upset, they were a licensed legal concealed carry permit holder, but we, the member of our team saw the gun and felt intimidation, what would the APD process be there?
Sure, so we would respond as called. We would contact both parties involved in that. If we saw that the CCW permit or the disgruntled citizen had a gun, we would certainly, you know, take control of that situation to make sure that the gun wasn't in play, probably searching him, detaining that gun for the moment during the incident, checking to see if they were lawful CCW permit holder, investigating the incident, taking statements from witnesses and the employee who felt intimidated. If we had probable cause to establish a menacing, we would then make an arrest. Of course, if we didn't establish probable cause for a menacing or any crime, then the gun would be returned to the citizen. We would try to deal with the issue internally here, whatever they're upset with, and then they would be walked out the building and, and leave City Hall.
Approximately, how many man-hours do you think that would take? I know variable case by case.
Yeah, I mean, it's a call for service, like many others. That would probably, if we got a report of a citizen with a gun in the building, obviously that would entail multiple officers that would be responding to make sure all of City Hall and, and the incident is secure. But it depends on the number of witnesses. I mean, but you're looking probably on a estimate, you know, 45 minutes to an hour and a half to ascertain what's going on and make a determination as to whether or not we have criminal charges.
Okay, thank you very much. Councilmember Ambrose.
Yeah, to follow up in that scenario, and actually this is kind of what was existing before the law went into on July 1st. And so this is for the attorney or Linda Haley or for the chief. What do you currently tell CCW employees when they're allowed to use their weapon? When they feel threatened? Or do you say, "Don't use your weapon, wait for the police inside City Hall"? Do you have a policy about when it's okay for people to use their concealed weapons? And would you, if we opted out?
I'm not aware of a policy right now where we talk to individuals specifically, a policy, a written policy in place. However, that being said, I know APD and perhaps the chief can speak to this in more detail. When APD does our active shooter training, there are conversations that we have with individuals, and everyone's required to attend that, related to what happens in those scenarios if we have an individual who happens to be concealed carrying. Because obviously, the police department wants to be careful when, when we have those situations. Also, to your, the second part of your question about how, how you might address this, if we do opt out and we do allow concealed carry, you, one of the things that you could do is allow the city manager to make reasonable rules around who, how we manage that process. And one of those rules might be that we specifically train employees related to what happens or when they're allowed to use it, when they're not allowed to use it, things like that.
Is there any other, John, do you have anything? Mr. Marriott.
No questions for me.
All right. All right, I will accept a motion from a member of the team.
So just to bring back up what Councilmember Pfeiffer had suggested earlier, if council would like to continue the public hearing in order to get more information before you make a decision, now would be the appropriate time to do that. So the way that would be accomplished procedurally is that someone would make a motion to continue this public hearing to a date certain. We would want to decide on what that date was, so you conclude that within your motion. That way, we don't have to go through and re-notice everything. But we can do that, you can make your motion, and that's how we would continue the public hearing. Alternatively, you are free to vote on this tonight if you feel comfortable doing so.
Well, I'll make a motion.
All right.
And then you can all vote on it and we'll go from there. I'm going to make a motion to postpone this to a date certain. Do I get to pick a date out of the air?
I can offer a couple of dates for you. Let's, let's throw out some dates, that way you have a date in your motion. So if we're looking at the calendar, and I'm going to ask Mr. Louis to double-check me here, but from what I have on my calendar, I believe our next business meeting is September 9th. So that is an option. And then the next business meeting after that is September 16th. So my thought process would be, I don't know how many of you are here for the 9th and the 16th, but I assume you all want to be here for the discussion and continuation of this hearing. So is, if there's anyone who's gone on September 9th, say so now and we'll, we'll look at our next options.
All right, well, I'll make the motion, I'm assuming everyone may or may not be here, let's just see if it even floats. Make the motion to postpone for more information to a date certain, which would be September 16th, business meeting, once we get more information. And specifically, the information I, I need on is, what are the other cities doing as in regards to overall just weapons into their facilities? I'd like to understand a little bit more of other elected officials where they do not have ordinance capacity or abilities. And if we pass an ordinance or not, how does that affect them? And could it affect them? I'm sure we can. So that, that's kind of my question is, is if I, if, if we vote up here to say not City Hall, and then should, should there be an ordinance that says all public spaces? Because if we're going to go with the argument that there should be safe places in Apex and any type of elected body where they reside, should we expand it to all those? And what's our capacity there to do that? So that's kind of the gist of why I'm asking to postpone, because I think I need more information around that.
All right, thank you. There's a motion on the table. Councilmember Marriott.
Thank you. I'd be voting no on a motion to postpone. You know, I think, I don't see anything compelling about us having to do it all at once. I also believe the legislature had no idea what they were doing when they did it and didn't even consider the possibility of that. And there probably is no guidebook or no, probably not even consensus on how this applies when you talk about places like Apex or the Fire Department. I also would say that the, I believe the state statute does say rulemaking, and certainly Apex can make rules within their facility, at least, at least an interpretation of rules. So I, I don't see that if we were to take this on tonight, we're doing anything that's harmful to any of those other government, governmental organizations, nor do I see that it probably affects us, nor do I see that if, if we did need to take a different action in the future, that there's anything that presents it. And I think it's better to, we've got this on the agenda tonight, we've taken public comment, we've questioned the staff extensively, that there's no reason to not, not go ahead and just, just take this issue on like we're supposed to. And so for that reason, I'll be voting no on a motion to postpone.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Marriott. So if all members of council will cast their votes on a motion to postpone until September 7th for, or September 9th, date certain.
September 16th.
September 16th? Okay, thank you.
That's what Mr. Pfeiffer indicated.
Okay, September 16th, date certain, for the purposes of getting more information as outlined. Councilmember Ambrose.
Yeah, I agree with Councilmember Marriott and vote no on this. I think we have enough information, and I support the Second Amendment in terms of a well-regulated militia. So I'm ready to vote no and say that we opt in to the.
Councilmember Ambrose, I'm going to request that you keep it to one motion at a time.
Right, well, I mean, I want, that's why I'm voting no, because I want to vote tonight to say.
Fair enough.
You know, that we should just go with what the state has proposed, because a well-regulated militia is our police force and not people who, we don't even have a policy before on how they should act in an active shooter situation.
Thank you. All right. Councilmember Marriott, if you will cast your official vote?
No.
All right, thank you. All right, that motion fails four to three, with myself, Councilmember Pfeiffer, and Councilmember Davis being dissenting votes. Thank you. All right, we have a motion. All right, so we have space now to take a motion on the ordinance at hand. We will not be postponing this hearing. Councilmember Faray.
All right. This is tough, because I don't have a clue which way council is going, so interesting. I move that CB 24-010, an ordinance permitting, permitting concealed handgun permit holders to lawfully carry a concealed handgun at the Arvada City Hall located at 8101 Ralston Road, be rejected.
All right, rejected. So, yes, so Mayor Pro Tim, actually, before I allow comments, I'm going to take the privilege of the chair, and I'm going to offer an amendment, which, Ms. Morris, I know this is extraordinarily unusual for the presiding officer to do, but this is allowed, yes?
Correct.
I am a voting member of this body, I am allowed to do it. So I will move to amend the motion on the table, except yours is to reject, except my, Ms. Morris, I might need your help here with the technical terminology. It will not be a, I'm not moving for a friendly amendment, I am moving mostly for a full amendment or a substitute motion. I'm moving to, for a replacement motion. My replacement motion is that we amend the ordinance to allow licensed concealed carry city staff who are currently in the employ of Arvada City Hall, this building exclusively, be allowed to maintain their right to concealed carry in the interest of protect, well, just be, sorry, that goes to comments, so just be maintain their allowed right to carry while preventing non-employed members of the public from being able to concealed carry in Arvada City Hall.
Okay, and just to clarify what your intent is behind this, when you say current city employees, are you just talking about city employees that are employed right now? Or would this apply to city employees who might be employed here in the future?
Correct. Anyone who would be employed in the future, and if somebody's employment with our, city of Arvada were to terminate, this right would immediately terminate upon their no-longer employment with us.
Understood.
And so for council's awareness, the reason I make this motion is, we've had some very compelling public testimony tonight from every one of you, from both sides. And I realize it's a bit of a hybrid option I'm presenting here, and I have no idea how my colleagues will feel about it. But I do understand the belief in safe space, need to protect sensitive spaces for the public to feel the right to come in here and not feel intimidated, to not risk feeling escalated when we have controversial hearings. And also, I too have full faith in our good officers up there, and I thank them every day for what they do to be here with us. I also understand that our very fine officers are not everywhere at every moment, and I understand that our concealed carry permit holders are the most trained, the most responsible, they pass background checks amongst any firearm holders there are, and the desire for folks who have been through that kind of training to protect themselves and their colleagues. So with that, and under my motion, we would direct the city manager to create sensible rules, and working very closely with our fine police chief to be able to make sure that everything is conducted safely and dutifully. That is my logic on this potential substitute emotion, and now I welcome all of you with what you think about it. So Mayor Pro Tim Mormon.
So I would recommend treating this as a motion to amend, just so that we can clean it out. We don't have a substitute, any rules for substitute motions in our council rules of procedure right now. So that's what I would suggest, is just treating your motion as a motion to amend. So you, what council would do is vote on your motion to amend. If that motion passes, you would vote again on that, what is now the main motion to determine the outcome.
Thank you very much. This is what I get for reading Bob's Rules of Order, which is the guidebook for council, for running council meetings, by the way, for those in the audience who don't know. All right, so we have an amended motion on the table. We will create, this vote will be for adopting, but I will allow any comments on the potential amended motion at this time. Mayor Pro Tim Mormon.
Thank you, Mayor. With all due respect to your motion, I will be a no vote on your amend, amended, amendment to the motion. While I do believe that there are many good citizens out there with permits, I firmly believe we need to be creating a safe space here, and, and my comment that I was going to make to the original motion applies here as well, in that we do not allow permitted carry, concealed carry in our courts and in our police department, and so I feel like that should apply to the whole entire building, to be consistent and to be clear that this is a safe space in which there are no weapons allowed. I'm old enough to remember 1978, when San Francisco Mayor Muscone and Supervisor Harvey Milk were assassinated by a fellow supervisor who was carrying a concealed weapon. So while, again, there are, you know, employees that, you know, can be, you know, law-abiding, there's, there's that one bad apple that we need to watch out for.
That's fair. Councilmember Davis.
Yes, I was just trying to, I was asking, I wanted to ask for clarification on what you were saying. So your amendment is that we opt out, no, we don't allow any concealed carry in City Hall with the exception of employees who are lawful permatees with concealed carry permits, and that be approved?
Correct. Okay. Councilmember Pfeiffer?
So I agree with, unfortunately, I will not be supporting your motion. I agree with Councilmember Mayor Pro Tim Mormon, you know, at my seat, out of the 62 that died, one did die from another employee, he went into the human resources office. And because of that, if we're going to stick with one rule, we need to make it across, we don't need to make it more difficult for law enforcement to determine the situation in the heat of the moment, so I won't be supporting it.
Absolutely fair. All right. If all members of council will, oh, Councilmember Marriott, sorry, your hand just went up. Would you like to make a comment on the motion?
Yep, I'll be voting no on your amendment as well. I don't, I don't think creating a special class of concealed carry permit holders of city employees is warranted at all, so my vote's a no.
Fair enough. All right, thank you. That is your official vote, it is no. Councilmember Ambrose.
I'll also be voting no on this, because I think it brings up lots of questions about, should we, you know, pay for them to go to their classes? Are they a special kind of role in City Hall? And I think we should just have the same rule for everyone.
Fair enough. All right. If all members of, Councilmember Marriott is a no, I feel like I'm. like I'm going to get flayed on this one. And I did. There we go. That motion, my substitute amendment, my amendment to the original motion cast by Councilmember Ferrey fails six to one, with myself being a dissenting vote. I tried. Councilmember Ferrey's original motion still stands, and I will open the voting for that, as well as the comment period on the original motion to reject the motion on the table, the motion, yeah. So we're back to Councilmember Ferrey's motion to reject the ordinance.
Do you want to start with Marriott?
Yes. Go ahead, Councilmember Marriott. You are muted. Councilmember Marriott?
Not sure what the, suggesting you start with me means, but anyway, I'm fine to go first. Me make a couple of comments about this. You know, it has been lawful to carry a concealed weapon in City Hall for decades now, maybe three, should be somewhere around three decades. And in that time, there has been zero incidents. You can't have less than zero. There has been zero in decades. I also want to mention that for those in the audience who are afraid of public mass shootings, I think we all want the same thing here. I don't think there's anybody who, who would like there to be the risk of more public shootings. I think, however, there's a very large gulf between the ways at which people feel comfortable, or the thoughts around preventing mass public shootings. I'll also note that concealed carry weapons permit holders are extraordinarily law-abiding. Now, I wouldn't speak to the audience, because I'm not there, and I don't know who's in the audience, but I can speak to those who, my colleagues on the dais, who I would consider us average Arvada citizens. Concealed carry weapon holder permits are more law-abiding than the seven of us by 16 times. Statistically, they are 16 times more law-abiding than an average citizen. So think about that. 16 times more law-abiding in every way than an average Arvada resident. These are not the people to fear. These are people who we should want around. I also want to mention, there have been incidents where concealed carry weapons holders have prevented significant probable and ongoing public carnage. There was a very highly publicized shooting in a shopping mall in Minnesota where a concealed carry weapons holder stopped a shooting as soon as it started, and absolutely prevented more bloodshed. There is also, in my mind, absolutely no doubt that Johnny Hurley prevented additional bloodshed in Arvada three years ago as a lawful concealed carry weapons holder, and obviously weltering, and did what he thought was right, and certainly stopped more innocent people from being killed. Also mentioned that, you know, Mr. Hurley didn't endanger any member of the citizenry, nor harm anybody other than the shooter, who did not care one iota about the rules. Somebody who's going to come to City Hall and do harm to anyone in City Hall, be they, be they a fellow citizen, or an employee, or an elected official, trust me, they don't care whether their weapon is permitted in City Hall or not. They are there to do, to do harm. And so I think this discussion, you know, while it's interesting, it takes on a different life than this really has. What this really has is a very small impact on, is it allowable for a concealed carry weapons holder to continue to carry in City Hall, like has been happening for decades, or not? And to me, I can find absolutely no evidence where anything is safer if they are not allowed to be continuing carrying in City Hall like they have for decades. I also, you know, the mayor was trying to carve out a difference for a city employee. I think city employees who have been carrying at work legally for decades, I don't think you're making anything any safer by eliminating that. So, you know, to me, this is a very simple discussion, or a simple, simple to decide, you know, the motion is to reject. I would be voting no to reject, because I believe we should pass this ordinance. I think it's very important that the City of Arvada do what's right for the City of Arvada. You know, the state legislature takes things on in a far more political view than local government does. And, you know, they took this on through their lens. I believe we have the vote that matters here, and I believe we should set things to the right spot, which, in my view, is the way that it's been for decades. And so for that reason, one last thing, you know, I believe if we, if we were to take action to, to not allow concealed carry within City Hall, it does put some obligation on us then to enforce that. And, you know, currently, I already think we spend more on security for this building than is necessary. We have budgetary issues, and expenditures like this, I have a hard time with. I think we'd be obligated to up these expenditures and be searching for concealed carry weapons at every entrance, and coming up with what to do. And I, I think to do that for purely ideological reasons, when there has been absolutely no demonstrated need for it, seems like a waste of money for the city to do. So for all those reasons, I'll be voting no on Ms. Ferrey's motion to reject, and hope that it fails, and hope that then someone will make a motion to, to pass, and that we can vote on that.
Thank you, Councilmember Marriott. Councilmember Ambrose, now you get your crack at it in full.
Thank you, Your Honor. And my comment, Councilmember Marriott, is just simply, I've been on a lot of these calls on Zoom, and I think we should start with the Zoom person, because I feel like I've been forgotten. So it wasn't anything personal when I said, let's start with Councilmember Marriott. I just wanted to say I'll be voting yes. Like I was saying before, I support the Second Amendment and a well-regulated militia. And in this context, that is our police department conducting active shooter drills and responding to issues. I don't think it's the public who isn't training in that context who understands it. I grew up on military bases. My family's hunters. I was in the military myself. I feel very comfortable with weapons. And I feel the key part of safety is communication, coordination, and a team who knows what to do in a situation, not people who have gone through significant training. They're 16 times more law-abiding. Totally believe that. Still not a well-regulated militia, which is the thing I think we need to have safety here. So I will be voting in support of Councilmembers Ferrey to reject this ordinance.
Thank you. Councilmember Davis?
Thank you. I too will be voting no to reject. And the reason why is, the report in brief that we were provided states on May 31st, 2024, Governor Polis signed State Bill 24131, which enacted Colorado Revives Statute 18-12-105.3, unlawful carrying of a firearm in government buildings effective July 1st, 2024. If somebody has a lawful concealed carry permit, then they are lawfully carrying a weapon. And so for that, I will be voting no, just based on language and the wording, and not feelings. And I have heard from my constituents. And so I will be voting no on the reject.
So Councilmember Davis, I just want to clarify, the title does say unlawful carrying of a firearm in government buildings, but when you go down to look at the language, it says, "A person shall not knowingly carry a firearm, whether loaded or loaded, in any of the following locations." So basically what it's saying, it's making unlawful concealed carry within our City Hall. So even if it would have been, I just want to make sure I'm understanding what you're saying correctly, and I'm making sure that you have an understanding of the law. So if, if we allow the statute to remain as is, we reject the ordinance that's currently before City Council, concealed carry would not be allowed within City Hall?
I'm just reading, as we go down to the background, it says, "Carrying a concealed handgun or other firearm without a valid concealed handgun permit was and remains violation." So I just, if, if you have a valid permit, it seems like you can, the way I'm reading this, you can carry?
If, if you, if you vote no. So I guess that's what you're saying, is you want to vote no. Sorry, this confuses me with the double negative.
I know. This is, this was confusing to me. What I want to do is, I want to allow
Concealed carry.
Concealed carry.
Okay, so then no.
Yes.
No is your vote right now.
Yes.
Sorry about that.
Thank you. Mayor Protim Mormon?
Thank you, Mayor. I will be voting yes on the motion. You know, as I, as I said in my earlier comment, we don't allow concealed carry in our municipal court. We don't allow it in our, in our police department of this building. So I don't understand why this chamber, for example, should be an exception. And to me, that questions what is the safety of this chamber, and how is that different than those safety concerns in those other parts of this building. So I, for one, I feel like consistency, we should be consistent throughout the whole building, and be saying that we will not have concealed weapons in this building. And so for that reason, I will be voting yes on the motion.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Pfeiffer, would you like to weigh in?
Ah, I hate being a wild card. But tonight, I might be.
You love being a wild card, admit it.
Yeah, let me, let me just talk through some of my spitballing and some of my, I agree with everything being said. And, can I give you background? I am a concealed carry weapon permitee, but I also don't carry it, because I feel safe. But I have the ability if I needed to. I also know that when you go to Denver, you go to the Capitol, you go to different places, you're not allowed to take weapons into those facilities. You know, even, I went into Meow Wolf, and they took my little pocket knife. It was my favorite one. And I was like, damn, I was going to walk three miles back to my car. And anyways, I mean, it's just amazing, the places that don't allow any weapons. So part of me agrees with you, Mayor Protim Mormon, and the rest that are voting for that. But on the flip side, I also feel it's, it's not, if we were going to say, don't do it here, I feel like that discussion should be more broad. It should be all government buildings, not just here. So I feel like we're just falling short, if that's the case. And that leans me to say, actually, to say no on this, because I don't think we're doing enough. We're only doing here, and we're the have and have-nots kind of going on. Because if this is the case, all government facilities and all Parks and Recs facilities should not have any of it, if we're to go that far. But I don't think I have enough information, legal, and what other cities are doing, to say if that's allowed, or can we do it, or not do it. I'm assuming we can.
You can prohibit concealed carry and open carry in any building.
Even if it's not ran by us?
If we own it.
Like Apex, the Apex Center? See, I think we will have a problem there. And...
It's possible.
Right. So I, so that, that's part of, you're going to go along this ride with me, because I'm not sure where I'm going.
Quickly, Councilmember Pfeiffer, I do believe Apex bars concealed carry. I've seen signs in their building.
Well, I Googled their, their policies, and they don't say anything about weapons. So, yeah, there's nothing posted. So...
There used to be.
And then also, I think that part of me, my frustration with gun laws, have always been that we do it in the, it's so easy for the state to do something at their, at their level, but lack of enforcement and lack of focusing on the mental health issues, lack of looking at ghost guns, lack of all these other problems. And yet, we're sitting here worrying about if a lawful citizen comes walking into the City Hall, and they're actually the one that I'm not worried about. The one I'm worried about is the wackadoodle that walks in here, and we have no control over it. And guess what? No one's going to prevent that. And, and yeah, we're lucky today, we have actually four officers in here. Sorry, they all like them, not you guys. Brass. So, you know, to me, I'm like, well, I almost feel like, let's leave it alone. We've been this way for centuries in the city, until we can do more studying. That's why I offered an opportunity to postpone, because I think there's still a lot of unanswered questions. And I think it's unfair of the state legislators to put something like this on us, when there's a larger state problem. So, you know, I'm in a weird place. I don't, can I abstain? That would be horrible.
Ms. Morris, I'm going to let you weigh in on that one.
I shouldn't say that, because, I mean, I'm in both places. I agree with everybody right now.
So you're supposed to vote...
So I am a moderate, if she asked if somebody was a moderate around here.
All right. We will note that on the record, Councilmember Pfeiffer. Technically, under our rules, you're supposed to vote unless you have a conflict of interest.
And I don't. That's all I have right now.
Councilmember Ferrey, I'll go and let you go.
Thank you. This has been a bit of a whirlwind, because when we first came and talked about this, we were pretty evenly split. And then we said, well, the staff will decide for us, because we'll survey them. And that was an even split. And so it was, it was really hard to figure out what the right path is. I agree with what you're saying. I don't think that the focus on gun policy should be concealed carry permit holders. They're the most law-abiding gun holders, and I think that that is the wrong focus for gun policy. That being said, the reason why I did eventually change my vote and make the motion was because I kept asking random people. I think I felt a little weird going around, but I wanted to step outside of my bubble and talk to other people that weren't in chamber or politically involved. And the theme was that they didn't want to have any guns, concealed carry or not, in some of these spaces. And so that was really telling to me, and as representatives of the community, we need to listen to our people. While the state might be making this policy, and I disagree with the focus on that gun policy, our constituents want this. And that is why I made the motion in, in support of it. So thank you for being on this journey with us, as we figure it out.
It's democracy in action. Councilmember Davis?
Thank you. And I too did, I would be out and about, and people would stop me and, and talk to me about this. And they were not happy that we were not going to allow CCW in City Hall. And, you know, what's next, and what's next. And, and while I am not a weapons user, nor have ever been one, it, you know, I worked for a municipality where CCW, or any weapon, unless you were a sworn officer, was allowed. But somehow, somebody got into the, the building and threatened the mayor with a weapon, and people scattered. And law enforcement was able to take that person down, but other folks were saying, had I had a weapon on me, I probably could have, could have done something. But they also knew that as soon as you do something, you put it down, you put your hands up, and you kneel, and let the cops do their business. So even the law-abiding people, this is not a law-abiding person, this is somebody with severe mental health issues. And so if this very large government can't keep out some, a wackadoodle, from, you know, what can we do here when we really need to bolster the numbers of our police officers and have them available to, to help us? So, yeah, I, I just, somebody went through the process of getting their license, and have, have done everything, and we have not had an issue, lawful or otherwise. Again, it just seems, we're, we're trying to fix a problem that has not occurred.
Okay. I guess that leaves me. I'm, like you, Councilmember Pfeiffer, I'm struggling on this one. I too am a little bit of a moderate, thank you. But I see both sides. I agree. We haven't had any significant issues with our, with this at our City Hall. You have both noted issues when I made my potential amendment, an incident at CDOT, and of course, Harvey Milk. I was unaware of those particular details, so those are disturbing. But where, where my head goes is, is, you know, I don't think we're likely to, that this particular ordinance is likely to be impactful to a wackadoodle, for lack of a more technical term. I agree fully with Mr. Marriott, that if somebody comes into this building aiming to do very real harm, they're not going to be dissuaded by any kind of ordinance about a concealed carry. So...
So setting that particular argument aside, because whatever this is will have no impact on such events. Then we have to look at the impact it could have on the day-to-day events which we experience, which is why I was asking questions about a scenario that somebody potentially at the permitting desk, where they have an agitated citizen. And then I have to go to the psychological safety, which is what many of our residents here with us this evening spoke about. They spoke about psychological safety. They spoke about risk of escalation. They spoke about feeling safe, the ability to exchange words and ideas in this hall with this body without fearing that somebody who is in an agitated state may unexpectedly escalate because they are in an agitated state. It removes the option, even though we've never had an incident with it. You don't until you do, which is always the problem with that. And I also worry about intimidation. Yes, our fine officers would deal with an agitated citizen and they would deal with it well. But then I think about our wonderful employees who sit at the permitting desk, which is not behind the bulletproof glass of City Hall. And how would they go home that day? What would they feel? I don't want that for our teammates here in City Hall. It would be better to remove that option rather than to try and legislate on a particular scenario that would be far, far less likely than one that frankly is more likely. So this is certainly not any sort of thought on the quality and caliber and integrity of our licensed concealed carry holders. I do think they are the safe, they are the most trained and likely the most law-abiding of our, if anyone with a firearm. But all the same, as Mayor Pro Tim Mormon noted, it only takes one. And with that, as we look at the intimidation and the psychological safety, I will be supporting the motion. So with that, I will ask all members of council to cast their votes. Councilmember Marriott, how do you, how do you vote?
No.
All right. Councilmember Pfeiffer, I have to ask your vote.
I actually have a comment.
Please.
I appreciate everyone's support and neither side. There's not going to be a winner or loser in this conversation tonight. And one thing, or, you know, no one's, no one's going to go away with what they want. Even up here, we're probably a good reflection of what the community is feeling as well, being representative of government. I will be actually voting no against rejection. And it's not because I don't agree with having safe space because I, I absolutely do. I just feel like there is more to this than the way we're handling it tonight. And I also do believe that all the years that we've had and taking the discussion from our police department, that, you know, they know how to handle it. They're highly professional, trained individuals. And for City Hall, I just don't see the need for that for law-abiding citizens who legally have obtained it. And, and on top of it is, the concealed carry laws are changing. And I know a lot of the gun owner shops and the, basically, the ATF comes in and audits and does everything. And there is so many regulations around it right now that the least people we need to worry about are those that have legally obtained their, the concealed carry. I think it, there are so many other laws that need to be enforced that exist today, as well as so many other things to be addressed. I think mental health needs to be focused on. We need to spend focus there. And we also need to make sure that we are addressing other gun issues like automatic weapons and ghost guns. And I don't think this is where we should be focusing. So I'll be voting no against, with your request, our motion.
All right. All votes have been cast. The motion to reject passes on a four to three with dissent from Councilmembers Pfeiffer, Davis, and Marriott. Thank you all for bearing with us this evening. We really appreciate your patience. Next, I will open, or I will close the hearing portions of this evening's agenda, and I will open our second public comment portion, which is five minutes. If there is any member of the public who wishes to speak to us on public comment. Seeing none, Mr. Louis, are there? Yes.
There is no private company out there of any size that allows their employees to come to work, even if they are licensed concealed carry holders, period. I work for Coors, one of the most conservative companies with the most conservative families. You are not walking in there with a concealed carried weapon. So you should be thinking about the context of what's going on out there as well in the private sphere. Doesn't happen.
All right. Thank you. Quickly, sir, name and address for the public record.
Michael Rubley, 7668 Devine Court.
Thank you very much, sir. All right. Mr. Louis, is there anyone on Zoom this evening? All right. Seeing none, I will close the public comment portion of this evening's agenda and open it up for reports from City Council. No, everyone's spoken out after that. All right. Ms. Haley, reports from the city manager.
Hi, City Council.
Hi, Ms. Haley.
Good work tonight.
Apologies, Councilmember, apologies, Ms. Haley. Councilmember Ambrose.
I did want to say for the public record, for folks watching at home, if you stuck around, that there will be a community meeting about the navigation center on September 17th. I just wanted to make sure that was well-publicized because I have been getting a lot of constituent concerns that they were surprised that the city bought the ECA building. And I just wanted to reassure the public that we will not make any moves or decisions about what to do with the building without considerable public input and research, especially about something as complex as a navigation center. And but that I as a, you know, the city can't really comment and I can't on council comment about pending purchases. We kind of have to buy the property and then decide what to do with it because it just affects the negotiations. Because if the public knows, if the people who are selling it knows that we're interested in it, then that affects the negotiations. And we do have a history of buying property and then having a plan that didn't go through, such as the property at 51st and Marshall. We purchased that thinking that we might build a navigation center there, got public input, got, got partner input, decided not to go with that site location. And so it does matter, your public input. It's not a done deal. We want to hear from you. And check the city's website for further details about the public meeting on September 17th, considering the early College of Arvada and the navigation center. And I also want to say about homelessness and veterans, I know we have a Veterans Affairs Department that is supposed to help veterans in all aspects, but veterans still, despite having a good Veterans Affairs, veterans still are persistently 25% of the homeless population. And the navigation center could be a great link for veterans and needing assistance from the Veterans Affairs because if you are a veteran and you've gone to Veterans Affairs, you don't always get the treatment you need. You need an advocate, you need help, and that's why things like navigation centers exist. So I wanted to respond to that because there was public comment about veterans and the Veterans Affairs Department. And the Veterans Affairs does not magically scoop up every homeless veteran and take care of them. You need to have, you know, services in place. And this is where the rubber hits the road as a city to be able to make sure the Veterans Affairs is doing their job and taking care of veterans. So I wanted to provide that additional comment. Thanks for everybody sticking around.
Thank you, Ms. Haley.
Thank you, Your Honor. Good evening, City Council. First, real quickly, I just want to thank you for your thoughtful discussion this evening. You have a hard job and we just appreciate you. So thank you. Very quickly, our next meeting is a workshop next Monday evening on August 26th. We are going to be focusing on water, wastewater, and stormwater, 2025 rates and fees. So looking forward to that. Also, please know, we do not have a council meeting the following week. That is the Labor Day weekend, September 2nd. So the next business meeting that we have is on September 9th. Thank you.
Ms. Morris, thank you for all your assistance this evening. Not a problem. And ditto on Ms. Haley's comments. I really appreciate the fact that you ask thoughtful questions and you really think through all these issues. So I appreciate that.
All right. Anything from you, Ms. Morris?
Nothing from me, Your Honor.
All right. With that, we are adjourned.